I'd like to call the presentation portion of our meeting together. And we'll begin with Josh Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commander Mariner is under the weather tonight and his daughter wasn't able to make it in from Duke University, so accepting the proclamation is going to be our school board member Dale Cantrell. This is the resolution number 19-03-731, the posthumous resolution honoring pioneer naval aviator Captain Rosemary Mariner. Whereas Anderson County has been very fortunate and honored to be the home of many military heroes, but perhaps none more important in the annals of American military history than Captain Rosemary Mariner. And whereas Captain Mariner is an aviation pioneer, being one of the first eight women selected to fly military aircraft in 1973, and earning the historic distinction as the Navy's first female combat jet pilot, and the first woman to command a military aviation squadron. And whereas, her distinguished military career included 17 carrier deployments and 3,500 military flight hours in 15 different aircraft. And whereas, she was a graduate of the Naval War College, held a master's degree in national security strategy, and served on the staff of the Joint Chiefs assigned to the Pentagon. During her retirement, she taught at the prestigious Center for the Study of War and Society at the University of Tennessee. And whereas, on January 24th, 2019, her life came to an end after fighting a courageous five-year battle with cancer. However, her legacy will live on firmly entrenched in American history, as the one who opened the doors of acceptance and equality for military women serving our great nation in combat roles. Appropriately, the United States Navy performed the first ever all-female flyover at her funeral. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Anderson County Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session this 18th day of March, 2019, that we honor the life and career of Captain Rosemary Mariner for her prominent and inspirational role in military history, as one of America's most distinguished female warriors. We are proud to have been the home of a true American hero who will be remembered throughout time as a courageous trailblazer, who shattered all obstacles impeding gender equality in military service. Her actions have inspired others to dream more, learn more, and become more, and thus she will never be forgotten. She kept the faith and fought the fight. The glory is all hers, the duty and respect is ours for eternity. Congratulations on a job well done, and her legacy will never be forgotten. Mission complete. Resolved duly and passed effective this 18th day of March, 2019.
Thank you, Commissioner Anderson. Next, I'll call on Mr. Commissioner Tim Isbell, and he will be speaking honoring past Commissioner Reese Wallace.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Posthumous resolution honoring former Commissioner Kenneth Maurice Reese Wallace. Whereas today, we proudly honor the life of one of the most respected Anderson County commissioners to ever serve the citizens of this great county. Reese Wallace, sadly, our dear friend passed on March 9, 2019, but left an unparalleled legacy of kindness, compassion, and respect for his fellow man. And whereas, Commissioner Wallace served on this body for 20 years, with the impeccable dedication and devotion to his constituents in District 3, but also the entire county that he dearly loved. He brought this county through difficult times by leading the efforts of many important committees that made critical decisions, shaping the county and the lives of our citizens for generations to come, including his instrumental guidance while leading the initiative for the new Anderson County High School. And whereas Reese was born on April 10, 1930, in a small mountainside home in Briceville, he was a graduate of Norris High School, and received an athletic scholarship from Lincoln Memorial University, continued his formal education. He completed his Master of Arts degree from George Peabody College, and after teaching at Robertsville Junior High for two years, he became a health physicist for the Oak Ridge Labs. And whereas, he was a teacher, scholar, athlete, farmer, public servant, gentleman, veteran, father, and devoted husband for 63 years, to his true soulmate, Christine. But above all, he loved our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Anderson County Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session this 18th day of March, 2019, that we honor the life of our dear colleague, Commissioner Reese Wallace, and we thank him for his 20 years of service as the county commissioner, his lifelong dedication to this great county. He will always be missed in the halls of Anderson County Courthouse, but his legacy will never be forgotten. Rest in peace, our dear friend. You were a man among men that left a positive impact on this county for eternity. Be it therefore resolved, that we declare Sunday, March 24, 2019, as Reese Wallace Day in Anderson County, to honor his dedication and devotion to Anderson County. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Isbell. And I might add that Commissioner McCamey and I had the honor to serve with Mr. Wallace, Commissioner Wallace, and it was a real honor and a pleasure. Mr. Cantrell will be on the agenda next.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to kind of echo what Commissioner Isbell said about Mr. Wallace. Jay had called me last week and had asked me some questions, and it surprised me that more people did not know about him, because in the 53 years that I have lived, there has not been a more important commissioner for our county. And then it dawned on me that that is the way that Mr. Wallace would have wanted it. We live in a culture now that is a look-at-me culture, you know? Everybody wants the attention, everybody wants the glory, they'll give you something if you'll name something after them. Mr. Wallace was the exact opposite. I met him when I was four years old in 1969, he was our Sunday School Superintendent. And he came and introduced myself, introduced himself, and never once did he forget my name. And people, I was talking to Johnny for a second, people that are younger than us, Josh and Denver, don't remember that there was a time when the rest of the county thought Anderson County ended at Clinch River, that there wasn't anything past the Clinch River worth going to look at, and Mr. Wallace changed that. Our schools were falling down, and Mr. Wallace fought to make sure we had good schools. And Mr. Wallace fought to make sure that we had a voice in the county, and he was our voice. And Tim, what you said about his love for Christ, you can't put that into words. When I opened my law office, he came by and he gave me a little carving of Philippians 4:13, "I can do all things through Christ who strengthens me." And he remembered to remind me that every time I came across a difficulty. I've had two mentors in my life, he was one. And I tell, I'm just going to tell you one quick little Reese Wallace story that in my mind encapsulates his whole life. When our son was born, our first son, he had a lot of difficulties. And we were in the hospital for four or five months, he had multiple developmental delays, cerebral palsy. It was a very difficult time as a young parent. And what was hard was when we got out of the hospital and we'd go back to church, we'd go out. Everybody treats you different. When you have a child that doesn't look like everybody else's child, they don't know what to say, they don't know how to come up and address you. It's just, it's an awkward time. The first person that was not a family member, that was not afraid to pick up our child was Reese Wallace. He went over, picked him up, just like he picked up 1,000 other babies, played with him, would always give him a sucker, or would find something for him, gave him Christmas presents, treated him like he would treat any other child, like he treated any other child in this county. And he would eat at the Waffle House, him and his wife would eat with my dad and my son on Sunday mornings before church. And the person that taught my son how to shake hands was Reese Wallace. He would come up to him, this little fella, and he'd say, "Stick your good hand out," because Ben only has the one arm, and he'd say, "Stick that hand out." And he'd stick it out, and he'd say, "Now, give me a smile." And Ben would give him a smile, and say, "Now, look into my eye." He'd look into his eye, and he'd say, "That's how you shake a hand." And to this day, when we go around, he shakes hands, and he says, "That's how Reese Wallace taught me to shake hands." I challenge, Josh, you and Denver, become the commissioner that Reese Wallace was. Great man, good man. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cantrell. Does anyone else want to speak on behalf of Reese Wallace?
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you. Next, we have a resolution honoring Gene Cantrell, requested by Commissioner Val.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman, members of the board. Since being on commission, I've had the privilege of reading a few of these, and it's always been an honor and a privilege to do that. Tonight is a little more special, because I'm getting ready to tell you about a man that I've had the honor and the privilege of serving with for the last 20 years. When I first started at the jail in 98, Gene, as we knew him, was one of the first officers that took me under his wing and started training me on how to properly do the job, and I learned a lot from him. It'd take too long to tell you everything that I've learned from him. To know a man who has dedicated 27 years to the people of this county is very rare anymore. And I'm proud not only to call Gene a fellow officer, but I'm proud to call him my friend, my mentor. Together, he and I have shed blood, sweat, and tears in that building down the road that we call the jail, and he will certainly never be forgotten for the service that he's given the people of this county. Resolution number 19-03-737, whereas Howard Eugene Gene Cantrell began his career at the Jail Division of the Anderson County Sheriff's Office in August of 1992, he worked there continuously until he retired in January of 2019 after serving the citizens of Anderson County for 27 years. And whereas, from 1992 through 1994, he served the people of Anderson County during a time of great transition, when inmates were relocated from the former jail on the third floor of the courthouse to the new facility constructed on Public Safety Lane. And whereas, Deputy Cantrell was also assigned to the booking unit at the detention facility, and was instrumental in creating numerous policies and procedures that improved the booking and processing of new inmates. And whereas, he later supervised not only the booking unit, but an entire shift for the facility. He also managed the food service unit for a period of time where he developed instrumental policies that streamlined the ordering, purchasing, and serving of meals to the inmates. He was tasked with annual budget supervision of over $300,000 in this critical role. And whereas, throughout his career handling numerous new assignments and challenges, he was performed with a high level of competency and professionalism. He was a deputy that the facility administration could always rely on to accomplish any mission assigned with impeccable integrity. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Anderson County Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session this 18th day of March, 2019, that we honor the career of Deputy Gene Cantrell and congratulate him on his retirement. We are grateful for his leadership and service to the citizens of our great county, and we wish him well in his future endeavors, duly passed and effective this 18th day of March, 2019.
I just want to say something real briefly. I've known Gene for a long time, worked with his wife Janet over in the city of Clinton. We're absolutely going to miss you, already do. We wish you nothing but the best of luck. And if you need free time, come down to the jail, and we'll give you some of that coffee we're famous for.
Yeah.
All right. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Gene, I just want you to know that I appreciate your efforts over the year and your support for me, and I just thank you for everything that you've done. It's been wonderful working with you. You're starting a new step in life. Enjoy it. And know that we're going to miss you, and you are welcome anytime for that cup of coffee.
Thank you.
For once, Gene's lost for words, so give him his praise.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Commissioner Val. Thank you, Sheriff Barker. Next, we have a resolution on the honor of the Anderson County Football by Commissioner Isbell.
Two years in a row. Mr. Dale's going to accept, yes. This is resolution number 19-03-740, honoring the 2018 Anderson County High School football, Maverick Football Team. Whereas, in the 37 years of excellence, the Anderson County Football Team has developed a statewide reputation for respect, admiration, and athletic excellence as demonstrated by their remarkable achievements and accolades of the extinction received by the team and individual players. Those 37 years, the team has advanced to TWSWA playoffs 23 times, including nine of the last 11 years. And whereas, this past season was no different, seeing the team accomplished another consecutive undefeated regular season of 12 wins, with advancement to the state quarterfinals for the fifth time in Coach David Gillum's young career. Throughout the entire season, the Mavericks were ranked number two in the entire state, with offense to average over 42 points per game, and defense to held opponents to less than 14 points per game. And whereas, All-State quarterback Stanton Martin continued to write a tremendous legacy in the history books of Anderson County football, by throwing for over 2,000 yards for the second year in a row, and being named for the second time as a finalist for the prestigious Tennessee's Mr. Football Award. And whereas, without exceptions, the Mavericks had the best running back tandem in the entire state, with Ryan Moog and Marquise Galahad both rushing for over 1,000 yards during the season. And whereas, the 2018 Mavericks placed 13 players on All-Region Team, six on the prep extra team, and five placed on the All-State Team, including Michael Carroll, Trey Noe, and Stanton Martin, earning this distinction for a second time, second year in a row. And whereas, Trey Noe, Ryan Moog have signed scholarships with Davidson College, Marquise Galahad, and Noah Corleto have signed letters for intent to continue their academic athletic careers at University of the Cumberland's. Now therefore, be it resolved by Anderson County Board of Commissioners, meeting in regular session this 18th day of March, 2019, that we honor the Anderson County High School Football Team, and salute to amazing accomplishments of these young men. Each of you will be forever remembered in the annals of Anderson County Athletics as remarkable players and student athletes. Congratulations on a job well done.
Thank you, Commissioner Isbell. And at this point, I'd like to open our public hearing. The Anderson, whereas Anderson County Regional Planning Commission has reviewed and made recommendations regarding the proposed amendment of the zoning resolution of Anderson County, Tennessee, in accordance with Section 13-7-105 in the Tennessee Code Annotated. And the first property is rezoning of property at 1907 Oliver Springs Highway, Clinton, Tennessee, from R1 to C1. A copy of the proposed zoning amendment is available at the Planning and Zoning Office of the Anderson County Public Works Department. Do we have any comments on this rezoning? You're invited to speak on this rezoning. Commissioners, have any comments?
Just a quick one.
Yes?
I assume this property's been posted like we, with signs, like we, yep, yep, thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, and I failed to recognize Mrs. Presley, she's here to speak on behalf of the Planning Commission for any questions. Okay? No comments? We'll go to the next property. The next property is, whereas Anderson County Regional Planning Commission has recommended that the property located at 819 Sinkin Springs Road, Clinton, Tennessee, 37716, to be rezoned from A2 Rural Residential District to R1 Suburban Residential District in accordance with Section 13-7-105A of the Tennessee Code Annotated. And has anyone here to speak on that rezoning? Anyone from commission?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to, you may have read this, but just in case, it's asking to be rezoned from an A2 Rural Residential District to a R1 Suburban. Yep. Thank you.
Yes?
And, Mr. Chairman, Margie is prepared to address that one, if you wish. I know there is no one here at the meeting to speak on it, but we did have a question on the radio. I think there was some misunderstanding that this was for a residential development, and she's happy to explain the rezoning if you would like.
And we do have someone here, we have Ms. Nikki Hollinsworth, and we have Alex McGrew from McGrew Engineering. Oh, the floor is yours.
Oh, but if you have any questions, we'd be more than happy to answer them.
Was there a question you had, Mayor?
No, no, sir, I just.
Okay. Okay. Here are no comments, I'll close the public hearing. Did I skip that? Brian Porter, do you have a presentation? And I apologize, Mr. Porter.
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to address a few things that were brought up at the last meeting. If I'd known, I would have been here, I just had no idea, so I'm here tonight to answer these. Some of them were pretty pointed about me and my department, and I just wanted to clear the air about some of this stuff. There were some accusations that I was self-governed, and I didn't have to really answer to anybody. Well, obviously, I answered to this board and to the mayor, so I'm not self-governed by any means. And there was accusations that we don't give out the stats. I've had the same office and the same phone number for 13 years. It's public record, not one person's called and asked, not one person's come down and filled out a request form. Now, I have those stats right now, and I can sound off right now and give you every one of them, and it's going to show how much progress we've made in the last year. From 2017 to 2018, the numbers are just astounding, and I think it'll answer all this stuff, so I'm going to go ahead and give you these. In the year 2017, we had a total of 925 animals come into my shelter. 468 of them were dogs, 457 of them were cats. Of the 468 dogs, 112 were euthanized, that's a 24% euthanasia rate. Of the 457 cats, 323 were euthanized, that's a 71% euthanasia rate. So for a total of, a total of 435 animals were euthanized out of 925, that's an overall 47% euthanasia rate for that year. Now, we had an increase of 324 animals that year from the previous year. Now, last year, 2018, we had 525 dogs come in, we had 527 cats, that was a total of 1,052 animals. Of the 525 dogs, only 36 were euthanized, that's a 7% euthanasia rate, that's a drop from 24 to 7%. Of the cats, we had 527 cats, 170 were euthanized, that's 32%, that's a drop from 71% to 32%. There was 206 animals euthanized out of that 1,052 animals, for a total euthanasia rate for 2018 of 20%, and it was 47 for 2017. So we cut it in half in one year. And, you know, these animals went to rescues, they went to Go North, they were adopted, and we had 356 more animals in 2018 than the year previous. So I think the numbers are just going to stand on their own as to what we're doing down there. There were some other accusations that I didn't respond to cruelty calls in appropriate manner. Well, the appropriate manner, as far as I know, is this right here, it's Tennessee State Law, and that's how I respond to calls. This is what I'm hired to do and what I'm trained to do. It's not emotion, it's not how I feel, it's what the scene provides and what the statute says. So as far as I'm concerned, that's the appropriate form to do these calls. There was accusations that I refuse to be transparent and accountable. Everything about me is public record, my budget, my numbers, my office is wide open, call come down, you can sit there all day, every day and watch us clean dogs and adopt dogs. There's nothing to hide, I have nothing to hide. Our agenda's to help animals, period. There was accusations that things were swept under the rug. I'd like to know what these are, and they said it resulted in deaths of animals. I'd like to know what those are. That's a pretty harsh statement with nothing to back it up. There was mentions of not being progressive, and that we're poorly governed and poorly planned, and, you know, not have any vision for the future. Here's our vision for the future. It's a shelter we've been working on, the mayor, myself, and Blankenship Architects, we've been designing this, we've been looking at properties. We do have a vision, and we're trying to get there. Says we don't have a volunteer program, that we think volunteers are liability. That's absolutely not true. That's a twist on words. What was said is that the situation the volunteers were involved in was a liability. You cannot be on Anderson County property after hours with no staff, just a volunteer with a private individual, that is a liability suit waiting to happen. And when I brought this to the attention of the volunteers, they got upset and they walked away, and told everybody that I said volunteers weren't welcome and they were liabilities, and it's just not true. That was not the case at all. We just got done having two volunteer orientations, where we're recruiting new volunteers, we have six volunteers that operate at PetSmart. And speaking of PetSmart, as for being progressive and moving forward, I myself, for five months, hounded PetSmart to get us in there, and finally got us in there, and our euthanasia rate on our cats just plummeted because of that. And if that's not being progressive and trying to move forward, we participate in the Go North program, we do adoption events, we just did a three-day adoption event at PetSmart, Friday, Saturday, and Sunday. Saturday and Sunday, I was there. I didn't get paid, and I didn't get comp time, I went down there on my own accord, because this is what I do. We send animals to Go North, we do the pet adoptions, we do rescues, I mean, we do everything. If I'm missing something, somebody please let me know, because I would gladly do it if it'll get an animal out of my shelter. And so I just wanted to address these, because it, you know, it just implied that we're doing nothing and sitting behind locked gates and just broken processes and outdated ideas, and I just want to know what it is that's outdated, and I'm, you know, we're trying to move forward, and I think the numbers speak for themselves.
Thank you.
Well, we're trying real hard, and we do every day, and tomorrow morning, we'll be right back at it.
Thank you for what you did.
Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes our presentations. Our meeting will be starting momentarily. 6:30.
Y'all want to take a break? Everybody good? Anybody need to take a break before we get into the meeting? Good? All right, we'll start at 6:30 sharp, we got one minute. Who would like to lead us in prayer? He found one that I brought. I'll do prayers.
Yeah, that's good.
Want to do a pledge? I wouldn't do it now, I wouldn't expect it either. What do you think I am? No, it wasn't me. No, it wasn't me.
How you doing?
You good, but I look...
So, we got all these, we got all these departments in your room.
(inaudible).
I don't have my computer.
You got it? I got it now.
I use that.
(inaudible).
Well, I don't know.
When you call on the results of the public hearing, I'll make the motion.
Okay. Where is the public hearing? It's not in there. Okay. Uh, appearance of citizens, it's... How come we don't have that in there?
I thought it was right after the public, after appearance of citizens.
The city agenda, it's not in there. We'll have to add that.
All right, we're gonna call the Anderson County Board of Commission, uh, meeting to
order for Monday, March 18th. First, please go in and register your attendance. I'll lead us in a pledge, or excuse me, prayer, and Commissioner Mead will lead us in a pledge to the flag. If you'll rise for a prayer, please. Let's go to Lord in prayer. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for this beautiful sunshine you bestowed upon our county and our great state. We thank you for those leaders we've referenced in our earlier meeting, and we thank Mr. Wallace and his family for all that they've given to this county and their leadership and their vision. We ask that you greet him with open arms, his job and the servant well done. We also thank you for the leadership of the others we've recognized here tonight. We ask for your love and grace and guidance as we proceed with the county's business. In Jesus' name, amen. Mr. Mead?
Please join me in a salute to our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Mead. Okay. Um, next, we're gonna do the public hearing, and then we'll go to the appearance of citizens. Chairman Creasy from Vice Chairman?
Yes, we just closed the public hearing on rezoning two properties. Whereas Anderson County Regional Plant and Commission has recommended the property located at 819 Sinkin Springs Road to be rezoned from A2 to residential district to R1 suburban. And I'll make the motion.
Second. We have a motion, we have a second. Any discussion on that motion? Hearing on all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The second partial was a partial at 1907 Oliver Springs Highway, Clinton, Tennessee, from R1 to C1, and I move that we rezon that property.
Second motion. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Next is appearance of citizens. Anything you'd like to talk about? You have three minutes to come up to the microphone, state your name, your address, and happy to have you.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Burton, and I live at 812 Old Emery Road in Clinton. You've heard about the investigation where several animals were abandoned in Andersonville, and one dog found hung wrapped around a tree. No charges were laid, but there were fundamental discrepancies between the reports from the sheriff and, and, and Animal Control. These animals were abandoned and neglected. The dog that died was clearly very underweight, if not emaciated. This is unacceptable. A sad story that highlights just one of the shortcomings of our current animal care and control. Shortcomings that need to be addressed. This department needs to define, standardize, and make public protocols that are not only legal, but humane. Currently, this department functions autonomously, answering to the county mayor, managing a facility located in a locked restricted area with only three hours open one morning each week. These are serious limitations, but they're not overwhelming. With a staff of four, our shelter should be improving its live release rate and programs. Other municipal shelters report exceptional statistics, operating with half the staff and double the intake numbers. Unfortunately, our community does not know about all the animals that enter the shelter, as this information is not always made public. Animals not posted can quickly fall off the radar and be euthanized, and the public has no idea how many suffer this fate. Many vibrant and successful volunteer programs that existed for the past two years are all but gone. The mayor and commission need to understand that new shelter and volunteer policies enacted last November are counterproductive. Fewer animals will be saved, and the consequences of the shelter's new philosophy will show up in the statistics. These are the statistics that need to be compiled and made accessible so that commission, mayor, and our community can better understand how to address the issues faced by the shelter. And we all know you can't manage what you don't measure. I was a shelter employee for nine months and a volunteer for over two and a half years until I was jettisoned in November. I loved looking after the animals, recruiting and working with volunteers and animal advocates and with local business. I never stopped learning. I learned that having more animals than homes in a community is a community problem that calls for community involvement. We need a shelter...
Ms. Burton?
Yeah?
I'm sorry, three minutes is up.
I've got about another paragraph and a half.
Shoot.
Thanks. I'll speed it up. We need a shelter...
I apologize.
All right, thank you. We need a shelter that is wel, that welcomes and engages volunteers, not one that restricts and locks out. I also learned that we need access to statistics detailing intake and outcome for each animal so that we can raise funds for programs that keep animals in their own homes or find homes for those up for adoption. We can do this. Each animal in our community deserves a lot to live a healthy and happy life, and we're working to make this happen. I respectfully ask commission, Mayor Frank, and Animal Control to take our concerns and requests into full consideration, to update and improve the functioning of our shelter. We are here to help, and we're not going away. We hope you'll join us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Burton. Is there more that want to speak on this issue? Because I'd like to say this, you know, it was a year and a half ago, maybe two years ago, that all of us were in this room and we're all together, and we had a lot of donations in support of the animal shelter. We're all on board, lots of volunteers, Mayor, Mr. Porter. I could say this, I don't think there's anyone in this room that wants to see animals suffer. Now, we may not agree on the process or their operation of how things are going. I think we owe it to each other to talk, and I, and I don't think we can do it tonight coming up at this speaker, or excuse me, and don't get me wrong, you have the right. I'm not gonna cut anybody off, but I do believe we can fix this with a meeting, and I don't know if we do it in operations, I don't know if we have a workshop, but I do believe it would be beneficial, and Mayor, maybe you can jump in and give your opinion, but I think we need to sit down and have some healthy discussions like we did in the past when we started this process and revisit some things, so it doesn't become contentious. And, you know, at the end of the day, we all want to take care of the animals. Is that right? I mean, I, I don't think there's anyone here that wants to see any animal put down. I mean, I've got some at home, I know we all do, so, and I don't mean to take the floor from anybody. If there's anyone else that wants to speak, you certainly have the time, but I could tell you, this commission will take action, have a meeting called with the mayor, Mr. Porter, and make it available. We all can come in and talk and, and try to address some issues. And, Mr. Porter, I appreciate you coming, giving your feedback. So, uh, anyone else like to speak before, I don't, I don't want you to feel like, come on up, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. State your name, address, please. Thank you.
My name's Katrina Hall. I live at 124 Long River Lane in Clinton. I'm the president of a 501(c)(3) organization called Anderson County Animal Rescue Foundation, and this was founded to help the animals of our community. We spoke to you on May 21st, 2018, if you remember, and explained our mission to help build a state-of-the-art animal shelter for Anderson County. Even though we're no longer working with the Anderson County Shelter directly, our mission hasn't changed. We have been benchmarking other shelters, and we've seen firsthand what positive things can happen with progressive attitudes, teamwork, and effort. It turns out to be a win-win situation for both the animals and the community. I also know what's possible to achieve with hard work and support from the people in our community, and I was also a former volunteer involved with animal adoptions, rescues, and reporting, and I'm also deeply aware of the challenges currently facing the animal shelter. It's my understanding that the current facility was only intended to be a short-term, a holding facility, if you will, until a permanent shelter could be built. It's been three years. I was pleased to see that there is a report. I have not seen that yet from what the future is to be for the shelter and the future plans for the shelter, so I would appreciate seeing much more information and details about that. And with that, what's the plan and timeline? The timeline is also very important. As we said, it's been three years. So currently, the building used for housing cats is in deplorable condition. It's been several months in this type of condition. Some of you have visited and witnessed the, the unsafe conditions that, that these cats and kittens are living in. And actually, I believe that this item was to be discussed in the November 8th, 2018 meeting of the Budget Committee, and a recommendation to appropriate $10,000 from the Anderson County's unappropriated fund balance was requested to, to rectify this situation. I think that recommendation was approved, but as of yet, there's still been no improvements made to that facility. It's been a long winter, it's been very wet, it's been very cold, and those cats and kittens have suffered in that deplorable condition, and our animals deserve better for that. So I also want to know what is the schedule and what is the timeline to, to create a better situation? To establish and maintain trust, it's imperative that our county shelter engage with its community and be fully transparent to the public for which it serves. Its staff needs to take full responsibility and accountability for all its actions and decisions. To do this, we need monthly reports of shelter status, including statistics for intake, disposition, et cetera. Without honest and continuous evaluation, improvement is not possible. Again, I appreciate the report, uh, Mr. Porter gave. I was actually very involved in creating that report between 2017 and 2018, statistics for improvements made. I'm curious for 2019, so I want to understand what's current and what's going on and what's continuing to improve. Every Anderson County citizen, citizen that has come with me this evening is here to ask our commissioners, help us protect and provide for the animals of Anderson County, because we're all dedicated to, to protecting the animals in Anderson County and advancing the cause of animal welfare in our community. And as was mentioned during the last county commissioners meeting, we would like to ask for an independent advisory committee to be appointed by the commissioners to provide oversight and accountability for the animal shelter. Through this advisory committee, we feel that the public can be better informed and included in decisions concerning the well-being of the animals in our community. As some of you may understand, animal rescue work is endless. ACR and many other rescues in our community are groups of citizens that care, and many times, that's really the only thing that even makes a difference. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Hall. Anybody else want to speak? Let me, uh, come on up, but, uh, while you're coming up, Commissioner Kam, did you have something, sir?
No, I'm...
Okay. Commissioner Meredith, did you have something?
I was gonna wait, sir.
Yes, sir. Go ahead, ma'am. State your name and your address.
I'm gonna be really short. My name's Karen Deiple, 1637 Sulphur Springs Road. I just wanted to let you all know, I've been working with a group of attorneys out of both Georgia and Tennessee, putting together laws for legislation for the state. I have some ordinances here I would like for you all to take a look at that perhaps may generate some revenue here in the county that can go to the shelter's budget, and I'll be back next month to see if you've looked at them. And that's all I've got today. I just hope that you'll look at them and consider them. I have sent them to the mayor, and I just want to see what we can do.
Erin, you yielded your time to the other two speakers, right?
That's the first time I've ever been short-winded.
Hey, very good information, and we appreciate it. Revenue always gets a lot of us interested around this part. So, thank you again. Anybody else like to speak? Okay, Commissioner Meredith, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I make a motion, we refer this issue to Operations Committee for further...
We have a motion by Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. You don't mind if I give that to Denenberg, do you, Commissioner Scott? It was kind of a toss-up, I didn't want to cut you out. Okay. So we got a motion by Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Any discussion on that motion forwarding this item to Operations? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Yes, ma'am.
I want to talk about the animal shelter.
You still can, come on. State your name and your address.
My name is Sarah Stigall, and my address is 120 Leech Lane in Clinton, and I've worked with Brian off and on for probably seven years, and there's a lot of things that we've worked on together, which he tries to save as many animals as he possibly can. I know we keep getting this subject of, um, the dog that accidentally hung itself. The law is very clear as to what constitutes abuse, and in this situation, the dog did it to itself. I was one of the volunteers that took one of the other animals. There was nothing wrong with that dog. He was well-cared-for. I find it very difficult to believe that at any point, he was abandoned. They had food, they had water, they had shelter. That's what the law requires. I know that Brian does a lot of things, a lot of his staff does, where they come in on their own time to take care of these animals. I believe our numbers are improving all, all the time, as time goes by, and Brian's very transparent about all that information. All the people have to do is ask appropriately and give him time to track down information. I know we have a really small shelter, and right now, a lot of animal, a lot of the dogs are going into foster. I have picked up a foster this morning, and wonderful little dog, and I mean, I show up, I pick up the dog, I don't scrutinize anything that's going on down there, right? And I'm sure some people know that there actually is an abuse case, and there's not information that can be released until after court dates on that, and that's part of the reason for the crowding in the shelter at this time. So, Brian, thank you so much for the job that you do. I appreciate you.
Thank you, Sarah. Appreciate that. Thank you. Anybody else on that issue? Gonna go to Operations with it? Thank you for the motion. Commissioner Fritz, I'm sorry, sir.
I just wanted to say, you know, you're not gonna find a bigger animal lover than my family. I mean, if I said anything about, uh, anything or do anything about animal, I did, my bags would be parked out on the street somewhere, but, but, uh, we want to remember that when we first started a lot of this, our animals were being picked up and taken to Oak Ridge and handled at Oak Ridge Animal Shelter, and then, uh, then after that, when Oak Ridge stopped taking them, they were, everyone started being taken to Roan County, where one... I know we have a really small shelter, and right now, a lot of animals, a lot of dogs are going into foster, I have picked up a foster this morning, and wonderful little dog, and I mean, I show up, I pick up the dog, I don't scrutinize anything that's going on down there, right, and I'm sure some people know that there actually is an abuse case, and there's not information that can be released until after court dates on that, and that's part of the reason for the crowding in the shelter at this time. So, Brian, thank you so much for the job that you do, I appreciate you.
Thank you, Sarah, appreciate that, thank you. Anybody else on that issue? Going to go to Operations with it? Thank you for the motion, Commissioner Fritz, I'm sorry, sir.
I just wanted to say, you know, you're not going to find a bigger animal lover than my family, I mean, if I said anything about, anything or do anything about animal, my bags would park out on the street somewhere, but, but we want to remember, when we first started a lot of this, our animals were being picked up and taken to Oak Ridge, and handled at Oak Ridge Animal Shelter, and then, then after that, when Oak Ridge stopped taking them, they were, everyone started being taken to Rome County, where 100% of all of our animals were at that point in time were being euthanized, and so every effort that we're doing now is preventing, you know, that amount, a large number of euthanasia, and we're saving a lot of animals. Unfortunately, you know, we do have restrictions and things of that nature, not allowing private citizens to own property without someone from the county being there. I know my wife would love to go out there and volunteer every single day if she could, but I've had to tell her that there's no way she can. We are trying to find land, I've been working with TBA to try to obtain property to, in order to build a shelter, so we can say we've got land available, so you can go out and get the property to apply for grants and stuff to build the facility that we actually need, so then it could be opened up to the public seven days a week, or six days a week, or however long, so you can be fully staffed by volunteers and all that stuff if it needs to be, but, but we got to acquire that property, and I'm hoping maybe to hear back from TBA, because I've went on up to the president of the TBA to talk to them, to see about what we can do to try to get that land somewhere that might be available, but I know this year is a major year, I mean, right now, I think if we gave everybody the money at the third warning, follow the different things, come forward to Budget Committee, we're probably looking at a 30-plus cent tax increase, so it's going to be a very, very tight year, and, and so, I know animals are very important, but we've got to get this land acquired, and we got to identify that land, so we can start maybe going after the grants, and that's been the major drawback in the issue, and, but to look at where we were at, and we're 100% euthanasia, and where we're at today, that is a step forward, and, but we still got to keep that momentum going, and I think we're going to actually get there.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz. Again, just a reminder, commissioners, we've had this item referred to Operations, but Commissioner McCamey, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to say that we do have, the mayor's formed an Animal Welfare Task Force, and we meet as often as we need to, I serve on that board, Commissioner Beloski, that was very animal-friendly, her daughter, who is an attorney, serves on the board, there's several people on there that really care about animals, and we want to see, you know, what's best for Anderson County and the animals in Anderson County, and I would invite anybody that has any questions to come to one of our meetings, they're open to the public, they're not a, it's not a closed meeting, they're open to the public, so anybody can come, and they're advertised, so when, you know, when you get an opportunity, if you want to come by and talk to us at the Animal Welfare Task Force, we'd welcome you.
Thank you, Commissioner McCamey, you know...
One other thing, we had talked at one time about some land that's adjacent to the animal shelter that we have now, and I'd like to revisit that at some point, we need about 10 to 12 acres there, and I think at one time, the commission said we could have three, but, you know, we've got over 100 acres there, so I don't think 10 acres is out of line, so...
Thank you, Commissioner McCamey, do you know when that next meeting of the Animal Welfare Committee meets?
No, we don't have a regular schedule, we usually just call a meeting when something comes up and advertise it and let everybody know, but we could meet on a monthly basis if we needed to.
Might be good to meet right before the operations, that'd be a good place to meet, then we can go right into operations and take care of business.
Okay.
Okay, folks, let's get moving on down the road now, we don't need to keep on talking, we've already referred this to Operation, we can sit here and talk about it all night if you like, I'd be happy to entertain you, but let's go, Commissioner Creasy.
Yeah, real quick, I just thought it was a good idea that Commissioner Fritz and McCamey mentioned exactly how much land they need, and Commissioner McCamey did that, 10 acres, so if there's an animal lover that's got 10 acres, they'd like to donate, I'd like to make this a public announcement, so, we're on television.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy, Commissioner Scott.
I just wanted to be real quick, at one time, we did talk about land, and we did talk about portioning something off out on Blockhouse Valley, but it was at that time that it was requested that they bring forth a business plan to yet we see. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott, thanks again to everyone for coming and talking about the issues, it's important, thank you, Mr. Porter, Mayor, and all the commissioners for your discussions, I'm certain Chairman Isabel will take this into consideration at the next operation, and we'll take care of business. Okay, next on the agenda, any other people want to speak before we get into the agenda? Thanks again for coming, we appreciate you, safe travels home, and we'll be talking soon. Thank you, I've got it right here, thank you all for the printed information, that's helpful. Okay, next is going to be the approval and correction of agenda, the consent agenda.
Second.
Got a motion to approve the consent agenda, seconded, motion by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner Mead, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Next is the regular agenda as presented, any changes, additions, Commissioner White, did you have something, sir, to add to the agenda?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Like to, under the Law Director's Report, we'd like to create a committee to oversee, to oversee a noise regulation, a compliance committee, that's well said.
A motion to add the Neighborhood Compliance Committee under the Law Director's Report will make it item D.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner, motion by Commissioner White, seconded by Commissioner Meredith, any further discussion on that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, again, that's going to be under Law Director Report, item D. Any other changes, additions, Commissioner Mead?
Under Part 13, I request we add the Legislative Committee Report.
Have a motion to add the Legislative Committee Report under item 13, you want to make that just under...
It's just dot, because the other ones aren't numbered, so...
Okay, we'll make it dot number four. I think I can count that high still. We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Scott, any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, any additional changes to the regular agenda? All right, let's get back to using the board, but we'll go ahead and run this one through. All in favor, as the agenda is presented, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, okay. Now, Purchasing Committee, Catherine has changed, oh, you're here, I thought it said Robbie was going to be, fill it in, just for Natalie, okay, come on up, Catherine, I apologize, I could have swore I saw something that said his name was on both, I thought he was double-duty tonight. Sorry about that, go ahead, Catherine.
That's okay, so including the agenda were two agreements that didn't meet the deadline to go to Purchasing Committee, one of them is a memorandum of understanding between the detention facility and ether that provides pricing for career readiness testing for inmates, and the other is an agreement with ASAP for case management for juvenile court, and it's funded by a grant, so I don't know if you all would even want to consider these agreements and vote on them now, or if you prefer that they go through Purchasing Committee.
Let's...
Second.
Have a motion to approve by Commissioner Meredith to add both, seconded by Commissioner Scott to add both?
Yes, sir.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, I'm sure the departments will appreciate that, and that's all I have, unless you all have any questions.
That was a motion to add.
To add, we haven't, we haven't voted on approving anything yet.
Okay, so now submitting for your...
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner Scott, any discussion? That's for both again. Seeing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine.
And that's all I have.
Give us a quick update on 205 Main, 14 days, clock's ticking, we got one bid in, we're ready to rock.
The bid opens April 2nd at 2:30, we've had over, I have the numbers for Commissioner Jaeger, he always wants to know, a total between vendor registry and LoopNet, we've had over 1,400 views of this solicitation, and it's also on the Anderson County Chamber of Commerce, which of course, I don't get data on who sees that, but, so...
And, and, the address is North Main Street?
205 South.
South Main Street. We have some folks here with Main Street, Oak Ridge, I was just trying to bring that to attention. Pretty good deal on that property, two acres, no restrictions, pretty much.
It is, so...
We're not, we're not asking for a whole lot, I mean, you know. Any other questions for, Ms. Catherine?
Yeah, I do.
Yes, sir.
Did you...
Commissioner.
I didn't know the timing, but it is 2:30 for that bid opening on the second.
Yes.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good evening, thank you, Catherine. Okay, next is the Budget Committee Report, now, Mr. Holbrook.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You had one item, did you want to add that now?
Yes, it'll be under Group 8.
Okay, I follow you, I'm following, Group 8? It's gonna, let me catch up, Commissioner Scott, where we at, page 40?
44.
44, thank you, all right.
Okay, first off, I want to talk about the Cash and Fund Balance Report, ending February 2019, we're eight months in, or two-thirds through our fiscal year, and taking the general fund line, non-spendable has little over 1 million, restricted funds at 1.4 million, committed funds 2.4 million, assigned 809,000, unassigned fund balance is at 4.8 million, and the total fund balance is at 10.4, close to 10.5, and our cash balance is 12.8, and right now, our general fund and assigned balance is over, above the limit of 4 million, which requires two-thirds votes for budget amendments, and also, Natalie wanted me to point out that the 2019 tax levy has been collected, and we are at the high watermark, high watermark for our cash, and until October 1st, when trustee mails out more, the new 2019 tax bills.
Understood.
Any questions?
Any questions on that, Commissioner? Thank you, Robbie, go ahead, continue.
Get into the budget amendments, Group 2, is the appropriations for school, there's just one, so I guess we'll take it individually.
Have a motion, Commissioner...
Approve.
Excuse me, I didn't mean to, Commissioner Fritz has a motion, Commissioner Scott, you're seconding the motion to approve Group 2?
Yes.
Correct? Any discussion? All, we got to go to the board on this one. Motion passes, go ahead, Robbie, unanimously?
Group 3 is the transfers for school, seeking commission's approval individually or as a group.
You didn't, okay, they are now, well, wait, everybody's present now, there we go, Meredith got a motion, Mead with a second, any discussion? This is for Group 3, this is General Purpose School Fund, 141, Fiscal Services, no discussion, all go to the board and vote. 15 yes, one absent, motion passes.
All righty, Group 4 is appropriations non-school, I need to pull number 30 out to discuss individually, but the rest, we can seek approval individually or as a group.
You're talking about appropriation number 30?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
There's a correction on that.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Fritz. Minus one, I'm going to come back to you, Commissioner Scott, hang on, we got a second by Commissioner McCamey, discussion, Commissioner Scott.
I was requesting to pull number 7 out regarding the ambulance fund.
Number 11.
Or, I'm sorry, number 11, sir.
Okay.
Okay, that's, I'll have to have either amendment to the motion, or Commissioner Fritz and McCamey to allow that to happen, or make a new motion, withdraw your motion, she liked to pull out number 11 for discussion.
I hit the button before they had a chance.
Yeah, I went with the motion first, I made a mistake.
I made a mistake.
Okay, so fine with you to withdraw or amend?
Yeah.
Okay, so we'll amend to take out the two items, number 11 and number 30, as requested by Robbie on 30, okay, all, let's, all in favor, let's go to the board and make a motion. Yes for those without the two. Motion passes unanimously, now, number 11, the ambulance fund 118, Commissioner Scott, go ahead.
Yes, sir, I'd like Nathan to come on up, please. As I'm trying to find the page that this is on, bear with me just a moment.
While she's looking, Nathan, could you, could you tell us what this is about while she's looking?
Sure, yeah, so we are transferring out of the insurance recovery into two codes, maintenance and repairs for motor vehicles, to get one of our amulets that was involved, not at our fault, but involved in a wreck, one of them is to get that fixed, the other code is for linen, which is disposable linen we use on our stretchers to balance that. We project we're going to spend more than we budgeted for that this year, so we're using that to balance it to get us through this year.
So the request is for $20,359.46 to cover those items you just stated, Commissioner Scott?
Correct, he's asking for the 8,500 to go to laundry service, and $11,859.46 to go to maintenance and repair vehicles, so during budget, my argument was, you have a $20,000 check that you received from the insurance company for damages that were done on a vehicle, and you're wanting to apply it somewhere else. To me, that would be like me getting an insurance check from an automobile accident and saying, mm, let's take the family out to dinner and buy a new pair of shoes, so unfortunately, I'm against this, this transfer, as I think it should go completely towards the vehicles itself, whether you've bought one and you need to put stickers on it, or it's for the repairs itself. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott, any other discussion on that? Seeing none, let's go to the board, this is only for number 11.
Does the maker of the motion get to say anything?
Sure. I didn't see it, sorry, I appreciate you speaking up, go ahead, sir.
I'd like to point out that this is money that's come to the ambulance service because of a loss of vehicle that was probably being replaced anyhow, and in this, the findings that we have gotten in the past from our $40,000 study is they've been underfunding them, so we shouldn't take away the money that they already have in their possession, I recommend that we approve this transfer.
Thank you for comments, any other discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
There was, Commissioner Scott brought up a question, I'm assuming this transfer is legal, I don't see anything illegal about it.
I'm not saying that it's illegal, I'm just saying it's not, I don't consider it to be a windfall, as in extra money to go wherever.
I just, my question was the legality, and I'm sure that it's legal.
We can ask Jay if it's legal, but I wouldn't see it as being illegal per se. Jay?
The mayor.
I kind of got lost, I'm looking at the minutes here, I mean, well, I mean, I found it now, but we go from 14, 15, and it goes to 11, then 16, anyway, 11.
That's listed under the appropriations, requiring full commissioner...
Could be why I'm lost.
On page 53.
All right, Jay, do you have any comments on this?
No, sir, there was a specific question.
Any specific questions, you have one, Commissioner Creasy?
The legality of this transfer.
It's, from what I understand, it's a transfer from an insurance code to an expenditure code?
Yes.
We do that all the time, I can't see an issue with it, I think Commissioner Scott's point is a judgment call.
Correct.
More than a legal issue.
Right, right. I bet that ought to be said.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Good comments, any other discussions? No, thank you, Commissioner Scott, thank you, Commissioner Mead, anything else?
Thank you.
Let's go to the board and vote. We have, what do we got, 13 yes, two no? We have, what do we got? Thirteen yes, two noes. Motion carries. Thank you. Go ahead, Robbie.
Number 30?
Yes.
It was a budget amendment submitted by the Clerk and Master, and when they submitted it, they put the wrong code for their department, so we're just correcting that to 53, 400.
And that's the one you handed out?
That is. No, that's an additional one we found.
Okay.
This is, that's the second one they did.
We've already added this one?
Yes.
Yes, sir. Okay.
We just need that correction to be noted.
Okay, we're on item 30. We have a motion by Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Any discussion on number 30? Seeing none, let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes. Fifteen yes, one absent.
Okay, Group 5 is transfers, non-school, seeking commission's approval individually or as a group. There's only one, and it's actually our department.
We'll do it both, individually and as a group.
Sure.
Commissioner Fritz with the, oh, excuse me, Commissioner McCamey with the motion, Commissioner Fritz with the second. Any discussion on this item? General Fund, 101, Finance, Payroll, $2,000. Seeing no discussion, go to the board and vote, please. Motion passes. Fifteen yes, one absent.
Okay, Group 6 is appropriations, the general fund unassigned, unassigned fund balance, seeking approval as a group or individually.
What page is that on, Commissioner? I'm, Scott, do you have it? I don't see it. Anybody see 6, Group 6? I cut off of Group 5.
Tell the next page.
Come up, state your name. What's that? Forty-six. We're going backwards, okay?
Yeah, it goes to 20A, and then there's 20, budget amendment 26, and 31.
Do you have it on yours?
I have a blank page.
We have a, we have, we go from 5 to a blank page.
Yes.
Tell us what the item is.
is from the Sheriff's Department. It's restrict, it's 122 Fund, the drug fund, restricted.
Oh, 20A, it's under Group 4.
Fifty-six, page 56.
Is this 20A?
But 20.
Is this, is this 20A?
No, actually, this is, that's, that is 20. 20A is, sorry.
We've already voted on that.
Yes. 20A is where, excuse me.
Could be 30.
I got you confused there. 20A is where we, 47,000 from the unassigned fund balance to the Sheriff's Department.
Fifty-six.
To get the, it was, previously in restricted for capital outlay. This is where they took the money and so they could get their cars on the road, you know, the 10 vehicles they bought, so we could get them on the road quicker, so we decided to take it out of unassigned.
Oh, here it is. Okay, 20, I got it. It's on page 56 on your iPads, Commissioners.
Sorry.
Thank you, Commissioner Jaeger.
And we're putting that, we're recommitting or restricting that money back to capital outlay, the 47,000.
Gotcha. All right. Anybody got any questions? You see it? Page 56 on your iPad? As Robbie said, they're gonna decrease reserve code, 3,900, unassigned fund balance, 47,000. Increase expenditure code, Sheriff's Department vehicle equipment, 47,000. Decrease expenditure code, Public Safety Projects Motor Vehicle, 47,000. Increase reserve code, restricted for capital outlay, property tax revenue, 47,000. Justification, the Capital Project Fund, 171, doesn't have the sufficient cash for the remainder appropriation for the sheriff's vehicle. In order to get a new sheriff's vehicles on the road without delay, these appropriations will assure that all 10 incoming sheriff's vehicles can be properly bagged and outfitted and taken the funding out of the general fund, unassigned fund balance. The money appropriated for this in capital outlay fund will be unappropriate back into the capital outlay reserves. Motion by Commissioner Shane Vow, seconded by Commissioner Catherine Denenberg, and passed and referred to Anderson County Board of Commissioners with a recommendation for approval. We got it covered now. Commissioner Meade?
Yeah, does, does this amount being approved from the general fund increase the maintenance of effort numbers for the Sheriff's Department? You know, the Sheriff's Department, the schools, you're not allowed to reduce their funding in any year from what they had the year before. This is all movement of money within the budget?
Yep, that's what it looked to me.
Mike, answer is my question.
Good question. So we have a motion by Commissioner Fritz, we have a second by Commissioner Scott. Any further discussions on that item? Let's go to the board and vote. Fifteen yes, one absent. Motion passes.
Chairman, excuse me, Robbie, I'm very sorry, just a follow-up comment on that last motion. The Sheriff's Office came to me today and requested they be able to use the three bays at 205 Main Street to do the transition of the old equipment, take that out of the vehicles to the new equipment. They need somewhere that's sheltered, and this is only gonna be for a few weeks. It won't impair the auction of that property at all. Last time I checked, I think I was up there with Robert or Catherine, there was some dog food and stuff for the seniors, and they're willing to move that and move it back. They just need the garage area, a couple of bays there, to transition the old vehicles to the new vehicles and get that equipment squared away. Is that a problem? Can we make a vote on that, just allow them to utilize that space?
Commissioner Meade, your motion, sir?
Yeah, the motion is to approve this request. The commission does control all county-run buildings, so this is the appropriate body to approve that.
Yeah, good motion.
That's Commissioner Meade's motion, seconded by Commissioner Scott.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner McCamey?
I'm in favor of it, but I would elect for the sheriff to meet with their senior center director to make sure that, you know, that they coordinate.
He's assured me he'll.
Coordinate what they're, what they're moving and where they're moving.
Okay. Good question.
It'll be on premises, Robert, just another section there.
Any other questions on this motion? Commissioner, oh, sorry, Commissioner. Commissioner Mayor Frank?
Just, I would just caution that they make sure they have the bay doors open as part of that work, because we have not mediated that building.
Yes, ma'am.
So I couldn't say, yes, it's all a go, but I'm certain if the doors are open and there's air circulating, but I'll, I'll let these gentlemen check on that.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it.
But I just wanted to issue that guidance.
Sheriff Barker, yes, sir?
Commissioner McCamey will make sure we reach out to the senior center and handle that.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion, we have a second. No other discussion on that motion.
Voice vote.
Voice vote, okay. All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Go ahead, Robbie. What you got next?
There are two more amendments in Group 6, number 26 and number 30. Do y'all have those available on your?
Well, we, it's not listed on the line item stuff, but we do have the, the request itself, and then what it is, and what fund balances it's coming out of.
A solid waste one.
Yeah, yeah, for 26.
It's on.
Yes, Jeff Tribaka. Yep, got it. Page 58 in your iPad. This is coming out of decreasing, let's see, we're first, we're gonna increase the expenditure code, then decrease reserve codes out of the unassigned, unassigned fund balance. Is there any questions, but commission, in front of you on this, before we make a motion? Anybody got a motion? Motion by Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner McCamey. Any further discussion on this request? It was approved, wasn't not, yes, by the Budget Committee. Okay, let's go to the board Motion passes. Fifteen yes, one absent. Thank you, Robbie.
Okay, number 31 is a budget amendment from the chancellor for $1,300 out of unassigned for moving to code 53700, 711 for furniture, chairs, actually.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Jaeger with a motion, seconded by Commissioner Meredith. Any discussion on this increase in, of expenditure code, $1,300? Let's go to the board, take a vote. Wondell, you need to vote?
[laughing]
Jaeger, you need to vote? Don't laugh at me too hard. Fifteen yes, one absent. Motion passes.
Okay. And in Group 7 miscellaneous, only 19B needs approval, seeking commission's approval of the proposed budgets for the three school federal projects in Fund 145. They are due to the state by March 31st.
What number was that, Robbie? I apologize.
19B.
19B.
We're approving the Fund 145, the three budgets for.
We got a motion by Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any discussion on that? Let's go to the board and vote. Motion passes. Fifteen yes, one absent.
Okay. And in Group 8, we're correcting a budget code from Clerk and Master. We did this, the same thing happened, the 53100 code was used, and it should have been 53400. Was approved in the February meeting.
Okay.
So we just need that.
Is that the one you handed out now?
That is the one I handed out.
Okay, you have that before you? Robbie handed it to us before we started the meeting. We got a motion by Commissioner Jaeger, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Any questions? Let's go to the board and vote. Fifteen yes, one absent. Motion passes.
Okay. And the last thing on the budget, for the budget meeting, I want to give a little update on the budget process. We met last Thursday, March 14th, for four solid hours. A lot of requests, and it's gonna be, I think, a very interesting budget year, to say the least. But the next step is for the Budget Committee, they'll vote to accept or reject the proposals on 3/28. And in April, the committee will be discussing the compensation increase request and the capital outlay requests that are not funded. So that's what's left on that.
Very good. Thank you, Robbie. Did you have anything else?
Non-budget. I do Finance Committee.
Yes. Okay. Commissioner White, did you have anything you wanted to add about the budget process or anything, sir? I think y'all are doing a great job, and just didn't want to know if you had anything you wanted to add. Next meeting's March 28?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Yep.
Next Thursday.
Thursday, okay.
At 4:00 PM.
Yeah, it's 28. 4:00 PM on the 28th. Thank you. All right, Robbie, go ahead, continue, sir.
In the Finance Committee, there's two action items for the commission's consideration. The first item is seeking a motion from commission regarding the Finance Committee's approval to pay for a purchase of material on behalf of the Highway Department without having an approved purchase order.
What are you asking?
Got a motion by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner Meredith. Questions?
Repeat that, please.
We're seeking a motion from commission regarding the Finance Committee's approval to pay for a purchase of material on behalf of the Highway Department without having an approved purchase order.
I understand. Gary, sir, could you come up and speak?
Yes. Thank you. No, in what amounts to, we've had, we've failed, we've failed over here paving it, getting it ready to pave, and we failed to get the purchase order ahead of time. Just slipped up on our department.
But you have the money, just.
We have the money and everything. Yes, contract was approved and all that stuff. We just failed to get the purchase order prior to.
And we'll still get, we'll still, we'll still get paint put on that road, right?
Hopefully this week.
It looks good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Commissioner Meade?
We understand, and I recommend we approve.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else? Any questions for Mr. Long?
Good job.
Thank you, Gary. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
All right, let's go to the board and vote. Fifteen yes, one absent. Motion passes. Thank you for bringing it to our attention. We appreciate that.
You're welcome. And item number two, since the state formed CT 0253, report on debt are required to be in the commission minutes, we're requesting commission approve the Finance Committee minutes as part of the commission minutes.
We have a motion by Commissioner Meredith, seconded by Commissioner Jaeger. Any questions? Did you have a question, Commissioner? I'm sorry. We can do this one on voice vote. Or do you want a board vote?
You can do a voice vote.
Let's do a voice vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Is that, should I keep it on the board there, guys back there? Make it easier for you? You all right with that?
Yes.
Okay, okay. Just wanna make sure.
Voice.
Okay, okay. Well, that's paperwork.
All right. The last thing I have for you guys tonight is the audit is complete and published on the Finance webpage. The Audit Committee will likely meet in April, but that date has not been determined yet, so we just wanted to let you guys know that.
And the only item, Robbie, I thought that I saw was the EMS code, and we're just deficient in funds, and that's a carryover from money we
Right.
loan EMS as a county or whatever.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That was the only item.
Right.
Yeah, it was pretty impressive.
That was a good audit.
Okay. Thank you, Robbie. Appreciate you, sir. I'll tell Natalie you did a great job. It was only me that was confused.
Thank you.
Who we got next? Elections, it says. Who's handling that?
Mayor.
Mayor? It says elections, but is that you for the Clinch River Regional Library appointment?
I can speak on it.
May, sort of library.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, the Clinch River Regional Library, in their meeting, appointed Joshua Anderson to a term ending 1 June 2021, replacing the Catherine Smith on that board.
Okay.
Moved to approve.
We have a motion by Commissioner Jaeger, seconded by Commissioner Meade. Any questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner Meade, and thank you, Commissioner Anderson, for.
Absolutely.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Director of Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, Dr. Parrott, since his rest, we're on spring break. He's taking a few days off. He's asked me to fill in for him. Do you have any questions about the report?
Any questions for Mr. Deal?
My job.
Oh, wait, sorry, sorry, sir. Commissioner Scott?
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry. How will the SRO program that the governor is, is looking to do for the, for the state affecting Anderson County schools?
Well, we are waiting to see if we're gonna get additional funding. We work very closely with the sheriff, and we're trying to work out a plan to where we can increase the number of SROs that we have in the schools. Of course, that's contingent on funding, and, but we are in discussions about increasing them.
All right. Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. Deal?
Dr. Parrott wanted me to extend an invitation to you to our annual Anderson County art exhibition that's gonna be held at the Kincaid House, hosted by Melissa Charles. And I've got some invitations I'd like to pass out for you all to have. But anyway, thank you very much.
Thank you, Greg. Appreciate you, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, County Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I only have one agenda item. This came in late from the state. This is a grant award for, it's called educational outreach, but it will help with signage at the convenience centers. And they wanted an expedited approval. The law director has already approved this to form, and the purchasing office has already reviewed it.
Have a motion by Commissioner Fritz, seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any questions or discussions for the mayor on this request for better signage at the convenience centers? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's all I have.
All right.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's always a pleasure to be with you. I just have the one action item that was added by Commissioner White, and that's the Neighborhood Compliance Committee. Just a little bit background, if you recall back in the fall, the Board of Zoning Appeals, BZA, chaired by Commissioner White, was dealing with an issue with a location down, I guess that would be District 4, 5, 5, and a location called The Barn at Williams Manor. We had a lot of calls there on noise and some other violations, traffic issues, building code allegations. We got them pretty much all squared away. They passed a resolution establishing some safeguards for that community. That resolution required that a three-member committee, a compliance committee, take up any issues about non-compliance with that particular resolution. We've asked Mr. Williams' attorney since October to appoint his representative. He's failed to do that. The county is ready to appoint their representative, and the neighbors are ready to appoint their representative. The county's representative would be Commissioner Jerry White, and the neighborhood The county's representative would be Commissioner Jerry White, and the neighborhood surrounding that location has appointed David Cusack. And we know Mr. Cusack. He's got B Z A experience from another jurisdiction, and I think he's an excellent choice. But anyway, we need confirmation of those two names and we'll have our two representatives, or two out of the three, appointed. And we're still waiting on Mr. Williams to appoint his individual to serve on that body. Yes, ma'am.
Motion by Commissioner Scott, seconded by Commissioner Denenberg. Commissioner McCamey has a question. Yes, sir.
Did they have a timeframe with which to appoint somebody? Did you?
We've never asked them, you know, there's no set timeframe, but this is wedding season coming up in April, all through the summer. And we know that we're going to get some complaints or we certainly speculate there'll be some complaints and we want to run it through this committee. That's the way it was designed, to vet these complaints before they come to Ms. Presley and the Codes Enforcement people. I'm going to reach out to the attorney again. We've talked to him at least three times about this issue and he's not nominated. The last time I spoke with him via email, he said that Mr. Williams had not selected an individual yet. And he's free to select anybody he wants. They don't have to live in that particular area. But we want to get our people in place just in case we do have a complaint. This takes some of the pressure off Codes Enforcement, it takes some of the pressure off the Sheriff's Office for responding down there. I think there was one night where the Sheriff's Office responded down there seven times. And for things that really, we've got better issues that need to be served or far more difficult issues that need to be served by the Sheriff's Office Patrol units. So, we need to get this in place. I feel like the business will get started here in April with the good weather coming and it'll continue on through the fall. But that's why we're here.
Okay, would our two representatives that we hopefully approve tonight be able to
Well, they've got a court.
Act, they, they would be able to act as a committee without Mr. Williams as the appointee?
But we're hoping I'll be back here in April with the addition of the third member.
Okay. Thanks, sir.
Any other questions about this issue?
Yes, Commissioner Jaeger.
That last question was what I was going to be asking.
Commissioner Creasy.
My question is, could you repeat the three names again?
Two names. Commissioner Jerry White and local resident David Cusack.
For some reason, I thought you said there were three that
There's three positions, sir. That's my fault. Mr. Williams has not appointed his representative as of yet.
Okay.
Good choice.
I got you, sir?
That's me.
Okay. Commissioner Mead?
Jay, could you briefly describe what the authority is of this committee once it's in place?
It's set by that resolution. I'll send you a copy of it. It's been through County Commission.
Yeah, I remembered seeing it, but I didn't remember the specifics.
It's basically a vetting mechanism to see if there is a legitimate complaint, see if they can't mediate those complaints between the owner and the neighbors. Hopefully, it's designed to do just that and take the pressure off Codes Enforcement and the Sheriff's Office. Now, if it is a legitimate complaint that needs a follow-up through Codes Enforcement, the Building Commissioner, or the Sheriff's Office, they'll be glad to refer that.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Any other questions on that motion? Everybody's in deep thought tonight. I like it. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I have no other action items for you tonight. If anybody's got a question about the written report or any other legal issue that's pending, please let me know. I'll be glad to answer that for you.
Jay, just quickly, I, I'm just curious. Indigent death, is, is that just something we've got to list? How's that work?
There's a statute on point. And if we cannot locate, or the hospital usually, or the funeral home cannot locate anyone, relative, or anyone that's willing to pay for the cremation of a deceased person, the county has to pick it up. We try our hardest to recover that money and we've been extremely successful. We'll run that name through Lexis and we'll dig up any relative we can. And we try our hardest to get them to pick up the, what we believe is a nominal cost. We've been very lucky that some of the funeral homes have discounted that rate for the county. Been very fortunate with Gentry Griffey and to have them on board, and also recently Holly Gamble. They've done an excellent job for us and I think that they're doing it at their cost and charging a slot fee for the transportation.
So, as we, we as a county, as you mentioned, we, we actually reach out and try to find families.
Absolutely. And over the years, we've, we've had to pay upfront, but we usually recover that money.
Thank you. I appreciate you talking about that. Okay, any other questions for the Law Director? Commissioner Fritz?
We cannot actually force someone outside of the immediate family to pay anything on this.
No.
No, I don't think so.
Absolutely not. We've been, we've got some community partners. We've had churches step forward and we've had friends of the individual step forward, but we look for family members. That's what we look for.
I was going to say, I didn't think you, we could go after a family member.
No, my intent was, the questions wasn't to force any families to pay. I just want to make sure the families were notified as best possible.
We, we go out of our way to notify.
I understand. Folks may not
This is a last resort situation.
Good comments, Commissioner Fritz. Appreciate you. Thank you, Jay. Anything else, Jay, you have before us? We're going to have a couple items on the operation. We'll come to that later.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Next, Ms. Regina Copeland, trustee. Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. And the rest of you Commissioners, I think this is the first time I've been before you since I've been elected trustee. And I want to say what an honor it is to be serving this county in this capacity. I wish I was here to brag about all the wonderful things that's going on in my office because there is some great things. But it's that time of year that we have to appoint our delinquent tax attorney. I can tell you that I'm far more educated in delinquent tax law than I ever thought I would have to be. I think I have read it over and over again until my eyes were ready to bleed. I've met with other trustees across the state. I've talked to other delinquent tax attorneys. I have talked to other attorneys. I've talked with the Comptroller's Office. I've talked to C T A S. I've talked to our auditor. Even spent some time talking to Judge Elidge. Because of the time constraints and I've been in office for six months, right now, I'm not going to make any changes in the position that is there. Because I want to have the time to put out either some proposals or R F Ps. I can tell you, it's not necessarily, everything is not necessarily the way that I want it to be. But under the time constraints that we have, and we have to appoint somebody by April the first, I'm kind of at a position where this is what we have to do to move forward. Like I said, I wanted to make for sure that the way we were operating at this point, because there's so many conflicting, you can take a law and there's so many different ones that interpret that law in different ways. So, I wanted to make for sure with the Comptroller's Office, with C T A S, that we were operating within the bounds of the law because that is what I took an oath to do. And I have found that we are operating within the bounds of the law. There is statutes in place that tells me how that that has to be and how that that has to go. And whether I like them or whether I don't, it is the law. And until we change that, there's nothing much that we can do about it at this point. So, if any of you have any questions, would love to come to my office. I would love to have you, because we're, we're doing some great things in there. Some of my staff has come with me tonight to, to be in support. I can't brag enough about them. Jeff has told me not to be too long-winded tonight. But anyway.
You're doing fine. You do have some questions here. You have some questions from some of the Commissioners.
Okay.
So, to understand you correctly, you're recommending to keep the current tax attorney.
Trippitino.
Trippitino. Thank you. All right, let's let Commissioners ask you a couple of questions.
Absolutely.
And you did a great job. No problem. Commissioner Fritz, you're up first, sir.
I'm just going to have to say, you know, right off the bat, I'm going to have to be adamantly opposed to this.
I understand.
You've been in office now for five months. You've had, you have to look at it for over five months, so it's not a spur of the moment decision.
No.
But this is a situation and a thing that's cost the county taxpayers a lot of money by going this route. That's the reason I opposed it the last time. When we have an attorney that used to do it and did it and did not, and use that money, then went back into the General Fund. And when we're looking at possible thirty cent plus tax increase on our citizens, we don't need to be paying another attorney a whopping salary to do this when we have attorney that could do it, has been doing it for years and years and years. And Presley does it for the city of Oak Ridge and Clinton and everyone else. And I think it's a waste of money and, and is doing the citizens of this Anderson County wrong. And I voted against it from day one, and I will continue to vote against it because I don't think we're doing the citizens of this county right by bringing in another attorney to do it when we have one that's capable of doing this job and doing excellent. So, that's my two cents.
Thank you, Commissioner Fritz.
Can I respond to that?
Sure.
I totally respect what you're having to say, Commissioner Fritz, and it's not costing the taxpayers any additional money. This is, it's
It's money being lost to the General Fund.
It's, and, and I see what you're saying under the way that it was before I came, that Mr. Jaeger was taking care of that. That is an appointment that I have to make and then the County Mayor has to be in agreement with that appointment. Also, it is, you know, state mandated. There's state statute that says that it's attached to those delinquent taxes. So, it's not actually coming out of, I mean, I guess the way it used to be, it's coming out of the General Fund. Because I guess when Jay was doing it, it was going into the General Fund. But it's not costing the taxpayers any additional.
Technically, it is. Yes, it is.
All right, who, I mean, let's just talk between each other and, and you're, good conversation, okay? I mean, this is what we're here to do. And, you know, did, did you get your point across?
I did.
Okay. Chuck, did you have anything else, sir?
No, other than in fact, it is definitely costing, because it used to help fund the Law Director's Department.
Understand. Good comments. Okay. Commissioner Anderson, sir, you're next. Oh, I'm sorry. Denenberg, thank you for your help, sir.
Excuse me?
I better put my glasses back on. Mr. Denenberg, I apologize.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ms. Copeland, I respectfully disagree with what you just said. And I do follow Commissioner Fritz's thinking that, and will oppose, of course, the nomination of Mr. T to, to continue on. It indeed is costing the taxpayers money because the monies that did go into the General Fund, which is the hundred and fifty dollars for the title search fee, no longer goes into the General Fund. In fact, I had even thought this evening of maybe putting forward a motion to however it needed to be done to make sure that that one hundred and fifty dollars went back into the General Fund regardless of who the delinquent tax attorney is. Now, I don't know if this is possible. I don't know that Commission has the authority to do that. But I certainly would ask our Law Director to please research and find out if this is a viable solution that we could entertain. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Denenberg.
And I would be more than glad to sit down with any of you. I didn't say this was a permanent fix. This is something that's going to have to be for right now. I'm not saying this is going to be a permanent thing. And I understand what you're saying, that back when Jay was doing it, that, that, that amount of money was going into the General Fund. I understand what you're saying.
Mr. Chairman, just one other point. Being on the Budget Committee, this is one of the things that we are really, really working hard to find any and every avenue of income for this county. Because like, it's been commented tonight, every department here has legitimate needs
Sure.
for additional money.
I agree.
And we are trying our best to make sure that employees are paid properly, that services are continued in a superior manner. And we need every penny we can get back into that General Fund.
I understand.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You may not have this in front of you, but do you have a ballpark idea of how many delinquent accounts are coming up now, or maybe an approximate, or ballpark amount of money?
I know that in twenty fourteen, I think there was eleven hundred and something. It looks like that it's usually averages somewhere between eleven and twelve hundred that goes upstairs.
And we've got till April first?
To file suit.
Out of compliance with the, with the state, right?
Yes, with state law. We have until April first to file suit.
Thank you. Commissioner McCamey?
Regina, you said this was a temporary fix.
Well, I mean, for a year. It's an appointment for a year. Yes. It has to be for the whole twenty seventeen taxes. Because whatever attorney is appointed at that time is the one that has to follow through with those taxes or that tax year.
This requires an agreement between the mayor and your
And me. I appoint it and she has to confirm the appointment.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Creasy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I respect what you're doing. You're doing a good job. And you said that you have only been in office a short time, and if I heard you correctly, that you haven't had an opportunity to fully evaluate that decision yet. And hopefully, you'll have enough evaluation next year.
I have
What you said?
I have spent a great deal of time evaluating it, but when you want to get together an R F P to put it out for bid or things like that, that takes time. So, once that I put my time in and researching it and things like that, if you send out proposals to other attorneys, things like that, it takes time. And I had, you know, yes, I have had six months I've been in office. I hit right in the middle. Right as soon as I walked in the door, we hit tax season. We've been shopping and bidding on our tax, our interest rates, so that we, so that I can help bring as much money back into the county as I can. And I would love to share with you some of that. As soon as I took office, we were over two million dollars in twenty seventeen taxes alone that were still owed. We started making courtesy calls. Within a six-week period, we collected over six hundred thousand dollars over that, just because of those courtesy calls. So, I understand and believe you me, I want to help and I want to do everything possible to save. I live in this county. I pay taxes in this county. I want my money spent right also. I took an oath to abide the law, but I also took an oath to the people of this county. And, and I assure you that I don't want any money going anywhere else either. And where we can save money and where we can benefit this county, I promise you, I want to be right in the forefront and helping do that. That's why I'm working my tail off to collect as much money. And once we collect it, then we turn it around and get as much interest as we possibly can on that money that we've collected. And I want to tell you, we're doing great. I'd love for you to come in and sit down. I've got a phenomenal staff. We have practically doubled our interest rate income. We have never, never gotten a penny on our main bank account. That is something I'm fixing to rebid because we keep seven and a half million dollars in that bank account.
Ms. Copeland, I don't mean to
I can rattle on and on and on.
We're not, we're not, we're not asking you questions about
Sure, and I get it. I'm sorry.
Your abilities to manage as a trustee. We think you're doing a great job in that regard. But we are here to talk about the subject of delinquent tax attorney.
Sure.
And you have pointed out who you'd like to nominate or have in that position. You have told us why. And now, the Commission has the opportunity to ask you questions about that. So, let's, and I'm not debating you. I appreciate your comments and I appreciate what you're saying, but we have five other Commissioners that have questions. And Commissioner Creasy isn't done, and you're going to get to speak, no, no, you get to speak to them, but I just, we just want to talk about this issue and, and you're correct. Any Commissioner sitting around here can come to your office and you're correct, any commissioner sitting around here can come to your office anytime.
I love it.
I know that, and they can come see you as well. So, back to you, Commissioner Creasy, I think you-
Yeah, and I apologize, I think I started off on the wrong foot about my comments, and we all appreciate what you're doing, we really do, and we know you're doing a good job in making a big effort of collecting those uncollected taxes. I was on the commission some years ago when we created the position of law director-
Yes.
-and that private act called for us to use the county law director as our tax attorney, and the funds would help pay for his position.
Yes.
And we all struggled very much over that decision, and it was really hard on all of us, and-
Sure.
And I feel like that I can't support any other way to go right now.
I understand.
I've got to support our law director as being our tax attorney, and that's how I have to vote. But that's not saying anything negative about what you're doing in your job.
And I totally understand, Mr. Creasy.
I just can't agree with your appointment.
Sure, I understand.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy. Commissioner Smallridge.
Regina, I think I have some of the same concerns that our commissioners have mentioned. It just seems like, you know, we could have a better situation for the county in terms of funding, and anyway you look at it, I think we are losing money in one sense-
I understand.
-that it could go to the county. And what you've said so far, is am I correct that if we appointed this person again, he would be in the position for a full year?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay.
Actually, the appointment, I think, is done by the trustee and the mayor. We just come to, we just come to commission to tell you who the appointment is.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Smallridge. Commissioner Mead.
I appreciate that you are determined to handle this legally. Of course, you do understand, because you know the law, that you can legally recommend that the law director be the next delinquent tax attorney.
Yes, I do understand.
And then under Tennessee law, if the mayor does not agree with you, then after a specified period of days, the district attorney general Clark would make the decision.
Yes.
In the past, when he was put in that same position, he selected the law director.
I think he was put in that position, I think, one time, and if I read correctly, he did appoint him.
That is correct. And so you still have the opportunity to do what's right. And I am confident that the district attorney general Clark would also do what's right for the county. And my final thing I have to say is I will have to abstain for cause on this vote, because of the situation between me and the current law director.
I understand. I don't think it's a vote, though.
I don't think we have a problem with the law director.
I mean, pardon me with the, the delinquent tax attorney. I misspoke.
Against you from the delinquent tax attorney, not the law director.
That's right, and that's not the law, I misspoke. The current delinquent tax attorney has sued me in federal court, and therefore I have a, I have a conflict of interest. It's cost me so far out of my own pocket $15,000. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Commissioner Scott.
Thank you. Regina, what is the salary for Attorney Tino?
Am I allowed to say that without, I mean-
Excuse me, I apologize.
I mean, is that something that I can talk about in here, or do you have to do a-
I mean, it's-
Let's ask, let's ask-
The Office of Vote Records Council has already ruled that that is absolutely public record.
Mr. Jaeger, is it proper for Commissioner to ask the trustee the salary of the proposed candidate in question?
You're asking the salary, that's public record.
So I can-
But, understand, this is two components, okay? The salary, what he makes for you, okay, that's public record, it's in your budget. The focus of this case against Commissioner Mead-
I asked, I asked the question, and that was simply how much, what is the salary of Attorney Tino?
Okay. But if you're trying to get his total compensation with his 150 per title review, that's a major issue in this case, okay? There's this federal statute that says you cannot release tax information. But I think we can all kind of figure, if you, if you process 1,100 times 150 a shot, you can figure that out pretty easy. But what she's asking is the salary that you have in your budget-
Yes.
-and that's public record, that's, do you have that itemized in your budget, or you just have it grouped together?
No, it's itemized.
What is the salary? I mean, I think we were fair to say it.
I just want to make sure I'm not doing something that's not illegal.
Law director indicates we can share, it's public information.
They're not asking for the total compensation.
Okay.
Just the salary.
They're asking the salary that's in your budget.
Correct.
I think it's $36,000.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Scott, you got anything else?
So Jay, am I allowed to ask, of the $150 for each title search, how much of that actually goes back to the attorney, or no?
Yes, but I think she's already answered that.
That's a title review fee.
Okay.
Yeah.
When the law director, when the county law director and/or his employees do the searches, how much does that cost the county?
I'm sorry, say that again?
If the county law director was to do the searches, and/or his, his employees?
That, that is set by the chancellor and-
But what I'm asking is, would you be paying him?
No, that, it is attached, that $150 is attached to delinquent taxes when they go upstairs to the clerk and master, and it is paid by that delinquent tax. When that delinquent tax goes upstairs, that $150 is attached to it. So when they go and pay that, that is like a court cost, added on top of the delinquent tax fee.
Let me clarify that. We don't make a penny off this, we never have made a penny off this, as far as my office. So as far as that money coming to the law director, I've never received a penny.
And that was going to be my next question. Thank you very much, Jay.
Okay. Jay, stay up here a second, I think Commissioner McCamey's got something, but I want to make sure, are you finished, Commissioner Scott?
And I'm, thank you.
Commissioner Denenberg, I'm gonna go to Meredith, you've already spoke on the issue twice, I'll come back to you though, Commissioner Meredith, and then I'll come to you, McCamey, and then back to you, Denenberg. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Ray, I remind, you know, we're sitting here telling the trustee that she's doing an outstanding job, and she's, she's telling us that she's made this recommendation for this attorney. You know, being a former office holder, you have to respect what the people of Anderson County has elected her to do. And she's worked with the mayor, she's followed the law, and we don't have a vote. We have a voice, we don't have a vote. And I think that we should take that into consideration and respect her. She said for a year, this is for a year, yeah, I'm sure we're losing money, but in her decision in six months, I know what it's like to be an office holder for six months, and I think we need to let her have a chance at this, at least for a year. And then if she debates it and it works out fine, she can come back next year, so that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Meredith. Commissioner McCamey, you had a question for the law director?
Yeah, I was gonna ask, just what Rick explained, we don't really have a vote.
You're correct.
And this, you're just here to inform us of your decision-
She's given notice, what I understand.
And so, Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion, we move on.
All right, we have a motion? Use your button, please. Just so we make it official, and do we have a second to that motion? Looking hard for a second.
Not me.
Repeat the motion.
The motion is to move on. To the Commissioner, Commissioner McCamey's point is, the trustee is simply stating who she is going to appoint in that capacity. She's not asking us for a vote on that, she's just simply reporting to us on who she selects. It's been good discussion and debate on many of the commissioners' point on why they think, we think perhaps it should be different, but that's where we're at. So the motion is to move on, and we don't really need to take a vote on that action.
I'll second.
Well, we already have a second. Commissioner White, sir.
I misspoke, because I abstained.
Okay.
I abstained, so I can't, I can't, I miss-
Yeah, we'll take that off. Commissioner White.
No, nothing.
Commissioner Fritz.
We may not have a vote, but we do have a say, and when it goes against the taxpayers of this county, we can have our say, and then if it goes to the DA, then let it go to the DA like it did once before. I'm here, and I will always stand up for the taxpayer, and in this case, it hurts the taxpayer.
Okay. Commissioner McCamey, could you restate your motion?
Well, we're beating a dead horse. The appointment has been made, and she's here to inform us, because she's made that decision, and evidently the mayor is in agreement with it. We're wasting time, we've got a long agenda here tonight. If y'all want to stay here till midnight, it's fine with me, I don't work tomorrow, so we'll stay here till midnight, but we're beating a dead horse.
Well, state your motion.
My motion was to move on to the next item on the agenda.
Your motion was to move on, Commissioner Meredith, second. Is the discussion related to that motion? Fritz expressed your concerns, I understand, you got anything else to add, sir?
No, but we still have to approve it.
No.
No.
No. Can I say something else?
Sure. Yes, ma'am.
I do want to tell you that I do respect and I do appreciate your input. Just because we don't agree tonight does not mean that I do not appreciate your input. I'm sure there's gonna be other things that, you know, maybe don't always go a certain way, but I do want you to know that I do appreciate your input, and it's not falling on deaf ears.
Okay, all right. Good comments, appreciate it. All right, now look, now we're speaking about the motion, okay? We're not talking about the appointment, we're talking about the motion. So Commissioner White, do you have a question on the motion? Keep in mind, commissioners, you can always make another motion after this one, and whatever it may be, but, you know, at the end of the day, we all know that the trustee has the right to appoint whoever she selects with the mayor. We can vote it down, we can move on, but at the end of the day, that's up to the mayor. I compliment each one of you commissioners for speaking your mind, and I think the folks at home will have the idea of where we all stand individually about this issue. I think it's fair to say, we could perhaps save money by using our law director who was originally put in that position. But we don't make that choice. That's, that's the point here, we don't make that choice. So that's up to the trustee and the mayor to make that decision, and we'll let your constituents in your district know that's, that decision where it's made, and we can say what you said, as you've been sitting around here tonight. So Commissioner White, I apologize if I cut you off.
I have no comment.
Okay. Commissioner Mead.
Nothing on this.
Commissioner Denenberg.
My only, was just a question as to whether I needed to make a motion regarding the $150 and whether that was relevant.
Okay. All right. Commissioner Fritz, sorry, sir, you're next. Let's-
I've already told.
Okay. Commissioner Creasy.
Yeah, and I agree with Commissioner Fritz, we do have a say, and I, and I am opposed to moving on. I think we need to express our voice if we oppose her selection, and that's the reason I'm gonna vote no on the motion.
Okay, so we have a motion to move on, and let's take a vote on that unless there's any questions. So the motion again is to move on and just move on past this subject. So no more questions, let's go to the board and vote. Yes is to move on, no is to stay on the subject and discuss it with another motion or discussion. Hopefully a motion.
It started semi-long before me did.
You've done good.
Commissioner Denenberg.
Oh, I thought I didn't hit it already.
Help me on this count. Two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Motion fails, we would, parliamentarian says we need nine to move on, so motion fails to move on. So now, opens back up to the floor. Do we have a motion by any of the commissioners on this subject?
Mr. Chairman.
Can we clear the board? Brian?
Before you turn the board.
Hold up, Brian, don't clear the board. Commissioner McCamey.
If Commissioner Mead is abstaining for cause, then the motion would pass.
Correct.
Is that correct, Jay?
Well, Commissioner Mead wanted to vote on this one because it doesn't relate to supporting-
Calls, reduce it down to eight.
Yeah, two, four, six, eight. Yeah.
I have a conflict of interest, I feel.
Well, but the motion is to move on or not. The motion is not to support any name or person, it's just to say, we're not gonna, you're not, you're either yes to move on or no to move on. I don't think any lawyer is gonna take it in court.
In which case, I would be a no.
Okay, so you don't necessarily have to abstain. Clear the board and let's revote.
Not clear on the motion as it was, because-
Commissioner Mead.
I wasn't clear on my status.
He thought he needed to abstain because it was only to move on, it's not to support or deny anything, other than to move on on this subject or not. Is there any issues with that, Mr. Parliamentarian?
We are clear.
Okay.
Voting on the same, voting on the same motion.
Same motion. Now you understood, you had a problem with the way you voted? Commissioner Mead?
Yes, I changed that.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Don't want to cut anybody off here. All right, board clear, let's vote. No, gotcha, Jameson.
Yes to keep, noted for it, yeah.
Does not pass, motion fails. All right, let's clear the board, next. Any other action on this? Any commissioners? Point of order, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, just a form of order for clarification, if this item is on the agenda and there's no action to be taken upon this body, then why, what will we make a motion and/or to approve? I yield to the parliamentarian.
Well, well, that's fine, but, you know, I wouldn't know what anybody would want to make as a motion.
But you can't make a motion to approve, because it's just an announcement, it doesn't-
But what if, what if a commissioner wants to make a motion that they don't support the recommendation, and that's it? That's not really-
That would be all we could do.
Yeah, I mean, it's just-
It wouldn't change, that's correct.
That way, every commissioner has a say-so, you see? I think that's the problem, is a lot of the commissioners feel as if they don't have a say-so. It's not here to challenge the trustee or the mayor, but I think it puts it on black and white on the minutes, how each commissioner voted on this issue as it was presented. But parliamentarian, you add whatever you'd like.
I repeat exactly what you just said, sir.
Commissioner Creasy.
I'd like to make a motion.
We are having a motion on the board.
Oh, do we?
Oh, sorry about that, I missed that, Commissioner. Commissioner Denenberg, you have a motion. We'll come back to you, Commissioner Creasy, next.
No, yeah, go ahead with the motion.
What is your motion?
My motion is to take the $150 that is paid into the clerk and master's office for the title search fee and have it to go back into the general fund, if that is possible.
Come on up, Jay.
Do you have a second on this?
No, well, we do now, Commissioner Scott has it. Discussion, Jay. Come back to you, Creasy, then Mead.
This is the problem with that issue. A statute allows for the trustee to negotiate the compensation with the approval of the mayor. I assume that 150 is part of Mr. Tino's compensation, is that correct?
That 150 is actually not discussed between the mayor and myself, that, or the delinquent tax attorney, that is actually set by chancellor.
I understand that, but you don't offer that up in your negotiations with the delinquent tax attorney as an additional compensation?
No, I don't set that fee, the chancellor sets that fee.
Well, my understanding is your salary that you pay him is for work to do in the trustee's office, and so this man's working for us for free? Working delinquent taxes for free?
No.
Well-
My negotiations, I don't set, the negoti, the part that's negot, the statute-
Says you negotiate with the mayor. All right, let's, let's, let's get back to, come on, commissioners, here's where we're at. We're- I don't think you have any power there. Now, what you're confused about- I don't, I don't think it's, in my opinion, I don't think it's appropriate for us to make a motion about fees, I mean, the trustee came to this body to ask us to either, you know, she's recommending her delinquent tax attorney for the, for the county.
her delinquent tax attorney for the county.
Absolutely.
I think we should take action on what we believe that is, but I don't think we should start trying to reinvent the fees and where they get paid and who gets paid. I mean, I think for this body, we'll either say you either favor of that or not and let's take a motion on that and let's just move on. I mean, the fees are, she'll come back with the mayor and they'll make their recommendation again to us and it'll be Mr. Tino. But this is your opportunity to say, if you're for Mr. Tino, say yes, if you're not, say no. I'd like to see a motion in that regard versus $150 payable here, payable there.
Mr. Chairman, I honestly, I really don't think we have a say-so in this.
And the $150?
On the, on the 150, first of all, there's a negotiation agreement in the statute, second of all, it's set by court order. What you're getting confused about is when I did it.
Yes.
I brought, you probably recall this, I brought that fee to you and had it approved by you because I wanted you to know exactly what we were charging, although it was in the court order, what we were charging these people for a title review. And that may be contributing to the confusion. You're thinking it was the way when I did this work. This is a decision for the trustee and the mayor to make and they stand on that decision, they're responsible for that decision, and once that fee is put down and it's signed by the, by the court, and I think you've seen those orders before, there's not a lot we can do.
Mr. Chairman, after hearing what the law director has explained, I will withdraw the motion.
Does the secondary of the motion withdraw the second?
She does, but she would still like to speak.
Okay. You mean you would like to speak?
Correct.
Because she's a she, too. Okay. Commissioner Mead?
Yeah, I pass somebody, thank you.
Commissioner Scott?
Thank you. The problem is, is that 1,100 delinquent tax accounts at $150 a search is about, if I can tally it in my head, is about $165,000. That's money that this county could use. And Commissioner Denenberg is correct in saying that we are trying to figure out ways to cut the fat, cut the corners, bring the money back in, in the budget committee. I simply wanted to ask, what is the process, Jay, in which commission has any authority to bring that position back into the county, into your office? At one time, it was brought to us to take that position from the law director and allow an attorney to be appointed. How does it get reverted back to the way it was?
It's going to have to take an amendment to the law.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Scott.
Thank you.
We have a motion, but I want to go to Commissioner Creasy before we take up the motion. Commissioner Creasy?
Yeah, well, that's the second time I got outmoved here. Yeah, I was going to bring up that I'd like to make a motion, so, but we'll go to Mr. Mead's motion.
Hold on.
When all this is over, I'd like to make a motion. I'm still...
We haven't, I haven't, I haven't recognized Mr. Mead yet, I recognized you.
I didn't mean to hit that.
Okay, so it was an accident, so you still have the floor and I'd love to hear your motion.
Right. Well, my motion is that I'd like to make a motion that this commission asks the mayor and the trustee to reconsider their appointment.
Have a motion by Commissioner Creasy, seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any further discussion? Let's go to the board on this one. Oh, excuse me, Commissioner White, I apologize, sir.
I think we heard Ms. Copeland tell us that time was of the essence here and that's why that she is bringing this nominee to us tonight. Now, I don't agree with it, but I don't think...
Suit has to be filed by April the 1st. I don't mind to go back to the mayor and discuss it with the mayor.
Right, and, and you can actually discuss it right outside the door and say we're keeping it as is and continue on with business, I imagine, because you have that right, the mayor has that right. The commission has a right to say how they feel and that's what we're going to take up right here, right now. Any other questions? Good questions, good discussion. I apologize, commissioners, if I've gone out of order or out of, I just want to move on and give everybody the chance to make sure we're doing this correctly. Commissioner Mead and we'll...
I simply asked the law director if it would be appropriate for me to vote on this.
My recommendation is you need to abstain for cause on this issue. Thank you, sir.
And the, and the motion again is to, Commissioner Creasy, I would like for you to say, you said it very well.
That we, as a commission, are asking the trustee and the mayor to reconsider their appointment.
And we had a second today.
For a tax attorney.
Okay. Seeing no other discussion, let's go to the board and vote. What about McCamey being gone? McCamey's out, so...
Mark him out. He's a no. No, he's not. He's not, he can't vote.
He's just absent.
He's absent.
Okay.
Valid.
Motion fails, correct? Or is it passed with a...
With an abstention, it passes.
That's a pass?
It passed. Yes, because abstain, I don't count.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, so motion passes to reconsider with the mayor. And again, as you understand, you can just keep what you, but for the commissioners, we just simply...
I understand.
You understand. Good discussion, I appreciate you coming.
And I appreciate your all's comments.
Thank you.
And like I said, they don't fall on deaf ears.
No, thank you. No, it's good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Regina, appreciate you coming. Okay, let's take a 10-minute break. All right, we're going to call the meeting back to order. Next is item 13, committees, boards, and reports. Next item is the library board report. Meg Harrison.
I have a treat for you guys. I suppose you can say it's a treat. It's the Tennessee Non-Metropolitan Standards for Public Libraries, which is one of the sources I used when we were putting together the strategic plan, the new 10-year strategic plan for the Clinton Library. You should be able to find that in your packets.
Page 162 on your iPad if you need it.
There you go. And I am here to answer questions on it and talk about it and make sure that you guys know what we're doing.
Meg, what's, and I apologize, what's your role?
I'm the director of the Clinton Library.
Excellent, excellent.
Yes.
All right, any questions for Meg and her presentation and we're passing around this as well?
Yeah, the, so I, I gave you guys the appended version, the, there's additional appendixes, but it doubles the weight of that packet, so I gave you the abridged version. You're welcome.
You do a great job and we appreciate what you do.
Thank you.
My wife went in there a few, a month or so ago and she was really impressed with the Clinton Library and what you all do and all the libraries for that matter.
We think we offer a good service to the community.
Yes. I would encourage anyone listening to go to the Clinton Library and any of our libraries and see what can be gained. What else do you have at the library? Internet access, isn't it?
Absolutely, we have internet access. We, of course, have books and audiobooks that we circulate. We also circulate children's tablets, we also circulate Wi-Fi hotspots at Clinton that are great if you're going on a trip or anything, they're fabulous, by the way. We also offer computer classes, we also do outreach into the community, I go to both, we go to the city schools, the county Head Start, and the senior center are all stops that we do, that we bring things out to. We also offer just general programs, story times, programs for the family. We literally have something almost every day of the week that we're open and we're, the Clinton Library is open six days a week, we're open 55 hours a week.
Wow. All right, we've got a lot of questions now. Commissioner Mead?
Not a question. I've been on the library at work for a couple of years and I've been to all the libraries, I've watched what they've been doing for a couple of years, and those folks do a wonderful job and the people that come to those libraries really appreciate it. I want you to know that I appreciate all you guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Mead. Well said, sir. Commissioner Creasy?
And my request to speak was for the same reason, is to praise, praise her and, and all those that serve on the library board. I served with them for several years prior to Mr. Commissioner Mead and, and I certainly appreciate the effort that libraries make and what they do for the community. It's, especially in Bryceville, Clinton, and Lake Rocky Top, that those libraries offer so much to the community.
They certainly try.
Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Creasy. Well said. Commissioner Isbell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Having served on the library board, I understand everything they do.
Yeah.
And we've got, I think, probably one of the best libraries in the state.
Thank you.
And the thanks that all these libraries do for the community. And I sent out an email, like the one from the Rocky Top Library, where they do the VIDA, the tax assistance. And we, I'm just going to read this, "We've been providing this service for 13 years to many people in Rocky Top and surrounding areas to include Oneida, Huntsville, Clinton, and Oliver Springs. We are trained and certified by the IRS. Each year, the taxpayer return is prepared and eval free of charge..." Each year, the taxpayer return is prepared and evalued free of charge. The average turnaround if receiving a refund of direct deposit is 14 days. The check being mailed to the taxpayer three to four weeks. This service saves the taxpayer hundreds of dollars every year that he can spend on other things instead of paying for tax preparation. We average preparing 300 tax returns every year. This year, we received a field state visit from the IRS and was pleased to receive a score of 100%. I have attached a letter we received from Lisa Elder and her comments from the visit. I think Commissioner Scott that. And also, there's another program. It's called Tennessee Reads. If you like, you can actually go online, and you can read any book in any of the libraries. Or my favorite is audiobooks. But I appreciate the job you're doing. Good comment.
Thank you, Commissioner Isbell. Great comments. Commissioner Anderson.
See if you wanted to make a plug for the fandom thing.
Oh, for Fandom Friday? Yeah, if we have any Pokemon fans out there. Our, we've been doing this Fandom Friday program since August, and it's been going phenomenally. We do a different fandom each month. We did Disney. We've done Harry Potter. Our Harry Potter event saw close to 150 people at it. We were at our fire marshal limit for that one. But this month, we're doing our events Pokemon. I know we have a lot of kids and grownups, actually, in the area who really love it. And we're gonna have a great program on the 30th. Friday the 30th.
Thank you. Anybody else? So you're just giving us updates?
I am, I am bringing the strategic plan to you to make sure that you know it and you see it, and you see what our upcoming needs are going to be. And make sure that, and see how we are trying to align to the state standards, which is what I passed out to you.
Excellent.
Like, for example, the, Commissioner Isbell mentioned Reads, which is the regional ebook and audiobook download system. We actually became an advantage member this year. So Clinton is now buying their own books to add to that system as well as using the state system. And we started that back earlier this year. And we're already up to 45 titles that we hold independently of the state. The state holds seven, over 70,000.
Thank you. Meg, thank you for the update. Thank you for the information. We have a motion by Commissioner Fritz. Commissioner Fritz, what's your motion, sir? Got a motion to add the information to our minutes. We have a second by Commissioner Meredith. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Meg.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Appreciate what you do. Okay, next, we have the Intergovernmental Committee Report by Chairman Dennerberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The Intergovernmental Committee met this past March 11 at 5:30 PM, right before operations. This was the initial meeting of this committee. We were called to order. Upon motion, I was elected the Chair of the Committee. What? Oh, thank you very much.
Is that condolences over there, Commissioner Fritz?
I'm not saying what he repeated to me. Commissioner Wondell made a motion to have the Law Director and the Mayor put together a resolution opposing any construction of a bridge crossing New Henderson and TVA Bull Run. Commissioner Isbell seconded the motion. Motion passed to forward to full commission for approval.
Thank you. That's gonna be brought up in the operations as well.
Right. The next business meeting for the Intergovernmental Committee will be at 5:30 PM prior to the Operations Committee meeting. Well, Commissioner Fritz just asked if we need to approve.
I wish you'd approve.
Approved the minutes as presented. Have a motion by Commissioner Scott, seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Appreciate your work. Look forward to the next meeting.
One other thing, Meg. There's going to be a meeting April 2 about the Bull Run situation that another organization is having at the Claxton Community Center. And for anybody who is interested in what's going on with Bull Run, you may want to attend.
Can you, that's April 2, so.
April 2.
Two weeks, basically, almost. Could you get us some information for sure? We'd like to get it out.
I forwarded it to you.
Well, I sent, I read, all that was, was a dissertation on.
No, 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 well, it's, there's attachments.
All right.
But I'll find out more.
I just wanted to know, date is gonna be April 2?
April 2, 6:00 PM.
6:00 PM at Claxton Community Center.
Claxton Community Center.
In regards to TVA Bull Run.
TVA Bull Run. And they're looking for input from the community.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you for the report. Next would be Operations Committee Report by Chairman Isbell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First is upon motion made by Commissioner McCamey, seconded by Commissioner Yeager, and passed forward to full commission for approval. Resolution number 19-03-735, given written approval to the IDB of the City of Oak Ridge negotiating accepting payments in lieu of AD Valerium Tax.
Have a motion by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner Mead. On the motion, any discussion on the motion? Let's go to the board and vote on this one. Motion passes unanimously, 15, one absent. Thank you. Next, sir. Thank you for, sorry for the long wait. Commissioner Scott has a question.
Yes, sir. I just wanted to thank the gentleman, Councilman Chen. And I'm sorry, I don't recall your name.
Mr. Smith.
Thank you for your presentation during the Operations Committee. It was very, very informative. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Appreciate it. Go ahead, Chairman Isbell.
This is not really an action item, but it's something that was taken up. It's upon motion by Commissioner Anderson, seconded by Commissioner Mead, and passed to form a subcommittee made up of the Mayor, two from Operations, which was Commissioners Yeager and McCamey, two from Budget, which was Commissioners Scott and Dennerberg, to assess their property in the courthouse. And I think they done that, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
And maybe that'll continue on. I don't know if one of those.
Commissioner Scott has a motion.
No, I'm sorry, I wanted to.
You'd like to speak? Yes, ma'am, go ahead. Commissioner Scott.
I apologize.
It's okay.
Yes, the four of us did meet up at 9 o'clock and went through eight, five. I'm sorry, oh, this, I'm sorry, Mayor. She in here?
She forgives you.
But we all met at 9 o'clock, and we went through each office in this particular building to try and assess where there may be room for the IT Department, et cetera, and also look at other priorities of possibly moving others around. But it has been ironed out for IT to be able to move into the three offices downstairs. And I'm thinking of the numbers that were. That was on the blueprint. There's three offices that are downstairs where they back up to.
Let me ask a question. Is the committee gonna report back to Operations? Or are you asking now to?
You do want us to report back to them completely.
That it would report back to Operations.
Okay, we weren't sure. I apologize, we weren't sure.
Go ahead. Commissioner McCamey, go ahead.
I thought we were charged with looking at it and making a recommendation to the full commission.
I think it read it would report back to Operations.
I don't know if that was the intent of the motion or not. Because it's my understanding that the subcommittee would look at it and come back to full commission because they've been here for the last three months now. I know this is Johnny Alley's third meeting, and Brian, and Brian is needing to move. And I think the committee was in full agreement, the subcommittee. And I would recommend that we go ahead and accept that.
We were all under that impression.
Accept that recommendation here tonight and have Commission approve it.
That would be up to Mr. Chairman if he would accept a motion for it.
I remember some discussion on that, too. And all I, I guess all we would need to know is the committee has an agreement with the parties involved.
Correct.
The three entities.
Correct.
IT, what are they?
IT, the Election Commission, and the Mayor's Office.
And the Mayor's Office to make these changes and adjustments to office locations.
Correct.
And everybody's in agreement.
Correct.
And the committees all in agreement, which the Mayor sets on.
Correct.
Is that your recommendation to this body?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right. Isbell has a motion. Let me talk to Mead, because I got caught up on this once earlier today. Let's go to Mead before I look at the motions and talk about them. Commissioner Mead.
Yeah, the question I have is, in the list of people she said that agreed to these moves, it didn't include the property assessor. And he was one of the ones that was here asking for additional space, and yet now he's not mentioned, so I'm not sure.
He wasn't on the subcommittee. Commissioner, or Mr. Alley wasn't on the subcommittee.
To his point, is the property assessor involved with these changes?
Yes.
I apologize, I probably left that up.
Okay, you didn't list him, and you just gave.
I said the wrong ones.
Then I'm, then I.
Good question, good question.
Fine.
All right. Did you get your question answered, sir?
Yes.
Okay. Commissioner Anderson, yes?
Well, mine was kind of along those lines. I was just making sure the property assessors got what space they were looking for.
Okay, good, and I appreciate that. Commissioner Isbell, you have a motion, sir.
The motion was to approve what Commissioner Scott was talking about, that everybody's in agreement, and so they can go ahead and make their move. And I think all the parties are in the room, except for Mark Stevens would be the only one. But I think the property assessor and Brian is in the room.
Okay, that's your motion. You got a second? Discussion, Commissioner Dennerberg.
Well, I was sitting in that room as well. And the only thing that I remember being agreed upon was the move for the elect, between the Election Commission, the IT Department, and the Mayor. As far as Johnny Alley's needs are concerned, were not even discussed. At least, that's my recollection.
Well. Commissioner McCamey.
We had talked with Johnny, and he wants the space where IT's at now, because it adjoins his property or his office. IT needs to be next to their server room. And that space is being used for stories for the Election Commission. And the Mayor gave up Richard Burrow's old office.
209.
209 for the Election Commission to put there, which is next door to the Election Commission. So it's, it takes care of all three. Property assessor, IT, and the Election Commission.
It's not property assessor. They're not affected at all in this, are they?
Yeah.
Johnny Alley gets Brian's old space, which is next door to his.
Okay, that's what he was requesting.
Yeah, yeah. It's property, it's space that he had once before. And he would go in where IT's at. Mark Stevens.
The Mayor would go in the space behind that for her storage.
For storage.
Right, her storage, because she would take out of 209.
Right.
And 209 go to the Election Commission, which adjoins the Election Commission office.
Correct.
It's a fruit basket, it's a fruit basket turnover, but, you know, it's, it pretty much meets everybody's needs, and everybody's pretty much in agreement with it.
And this was all going to be completed before the end of April?
Yes.
I asked you to come up, Mr. Chairman. Johnny, are you helping?
Yes, I'm, in the future, though, I want to speak with the committee. If other people vacate the courthouse, I bring my Macra under one roof. But that's later for what's happened now. I'm perfectly fine. The Mayor's asked if she gave up that room, would I allow her to put some things in the storage of that room? And I'll work with her fine.
Well, that's where.
I'll work with everybody. So yeah, I'm perfectly fine with what you did, and I appreciate you.
Okay.
Thank you, Johnny.
All right.
Thank you for asking, Jay. Okay, so Commissioner Creasy?
Yeah, just taking me off the board. My questions are answered.
Okay, McKay?
I just want to thank Teresa and everyone that worked on it. This is a great solution.
So, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman.
Brian's shaking his head that he agrees. I just.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, we were simply tackling the priority.
Way to go. Good.
Brian blessed us throughout the whole courthouse.
It'd been probably prudent to let the Operations Chairman know that, and maybe you did, and I'm not criticizing, okay? Just, hey, everything was agreed to. You probably sent out an email, maybe?
Oh, no, it didn't happen. I apologize.
It's okay.
We were under the impression, as a group, we were under the impression that we were bringing it back to commission under the Operations Report.
Very good. And that's what we're doing. So, we have a motion? Are we got a new motion?
I have a motion to amend.
A motion to amend.
Very minor.
Okay.
Make a motion to amend the motion to require that seems, it doesn't seem to be all written down, that after this is written down, that it'd be subject to approval by the Chair.
I don't think I should have that.
I mean, because right now, it's not in writing at all. It's just all verbal.
Well, it's gonna go into the minutes as the motion stated. And it will be.
That a full description will be in the minutes?
Yes, and then before our, before our. It's okay, I mean, good questions.
That's fine.
And before the next meeting, obviously, before we approve the minutes, we can make changes if we need to.
I withdraw my motion to amend.
Okay. So, you want to read the motion one more time, Mr. Chairman?
Yes. The motion was to approve the outcome of the subcommittee based on the property assessor and the IT Director have decided in unison what to do, along with the Mayor, giving up her space.
And the Election Commission.
Okay, very good. We got that motion, we got a second. Okay, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's unanimous. Thank you, good job. Mr. Chairman, go ahead.
Motion was made by Commissioner Wondell to approve the hunt as presented with a youth hunt beginning March 23 and a veterans hunt beginning April 27. Motion seconded by Commissioner Mead, motion passed.
We got a motion by Commissioner Scott, seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any discussion? Only thing I will say, this is for out at the Lockhouse Valley Landfield area. We've done this for several years now. It works well for the youth and the veterans. And it's managed by some folks that are experienced in turkey hunting, so it's worked well. So Jay's involved, too, kinda. No questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Upon motion made by Commissioner Yeager to approve the request of the Mayor to initiate work on the creation of an arts commission. Motion was seconded by Commissioner McCamey and passed forward to full commission for approval.
Have a motion by Commissioner Scott, seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion was made by Commissioner Wondell for the Mayor to work with Finance and Conservation Board to allocate funds as necessary to the Mountain View Park 501-3C. Motion was seconded by Commissioner Jameson. Motion passed forward to full commission for approval.
Got a motion by Commissioner Yeager, seconded by Commissioner Scott. Any discussion on that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Motion was, this was under new business. Motion was made by Commissioner McCamey to allow Chairman to sign legal document. Motion was seconded by Commissioner Mead and passed forward to full commission for approval.
We got a motion by Commissioner Scott, seconded by Commissioner Mead. Any discussion? Do we have that document for me to sign tonight?
Ned's got it.
Ned's got it? So this would be approving Mead to sign the document as presented? And what was the document again, Jay? Have I forget? It's to release the vintage properties?
Yes, sir, you're correct. Saying we have no legal interest in the general sessions.
Division 2 Real Estate.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And I appreciate Commission. I appreciate you, Jay, giving me some time to kinda look it over. And I appreciate the Commission looking at it as well. And the Mayor looked at it as well. Are you, you gonna?
Yes, I wanted to add one thing. The Mayor emailed me today. She'd like for me to record something in the Registered Deeds Office saying that we surrender any legal interest that we could possibly have. And I'll be glad to do that for her.
Thank you, Jay, I appreciate it. And thank the Mayor for her help. I'll sign that document at the end of this meeting. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Next, we have two resolutions, Mr. Chairman. One is a resolution endorsing off-road motor vehicles on Slatestone Road, as found on page 196 of your iPad.
Oh, thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Mead to approve, seconded by Commissioner Yeager. Any discussion? All of this is, Commissioner Fritz.
It's either the second or maybe third time we've approved a resolution to endorse these vehicles for on the main streets and stuff. And after seeing this thing in Nashville where the policeman was dragged, is there anything to watch how these motor vehicles are on these streets to prevent something like that happening up there and stuff like that? Prevent groups of them at one time?
stuff like that? Prevent groups of them at one time, four wheelies, and not, stuff of that nature. Because that's less we want, someone get up there and maybe policeman get hurt, or citizen get hurt, or something like that. You wouldn't think that something like that happened in streets of Nashville. But, you know, here just recently, this past week, you had a police officer drug down the street.
I, I mean, to your point, I think the one in Nashville was just, they didn't have the right to ride in Nashville. And it was, a police officer tried to stop those individuals as a group of them, and that's kind of what happened. This is somewhat different as, the way I understand it, they're asking for us to allow, and they would have to be required to get a permit. And it also has in here, I read it today myself, too, it's controlled with our sheriff's department, and they're required to do certain things, like use signs to stop headlights, streetlights. They're required to be on and off the roads. A half hour after sunrise isn't when they're allowed to be on, and a half hour before sunset, and some other things. But I understand your concerns, Commissioner, and I don't want you to think I'm belittling it at all.
I know just when you get a group like that together, things can happen, and we keep adding more and more to it. And just, just adds a concern.
Yes, sir. Yes. How's it work so far out, that neck of the woods? I mean, have you guys had any issues?
The tourism director's out in the hall, and she can probably give some numbers. But as the law director pointed out, that Wind Rock Park now is the number two destination in the United States for ATVs. And in a rural tourism district like ours, it's really helped. And that's what I said, if you'll come up to Rocky Top on the weekends, it's kind of like going to Oak Ridge on weekends, but you'll see all the local restaurants. You'll see more ATVs than you do cars.
But not, but not a real, I guess to Commissioner Fritz's point, no real issues?
No, because these are people that really invest into these ATVs. You know, these things may cost $30,000, and they're licensed, and, you know, they're tagged and all that. So they're pretty respectable. I'm, we're.
So they're not allowed on the road unless they have the tag, or the permit? Is that right?
These are licensed vehicles.
The other thing is, they're still subject to reckless driving charges and any other thing that, that it'll still be patrolled, Slate Stone, by the sheriff's office, 116's patrol, by the sheriff's office and the state patrol. They're still subject to getting a ticket if they speed or drive recklessly. That doesn't change. But Commissioner, Chairman Wondell's right. There's, all the safety laws are in place. They have to have a helmet on. We've had, this is the fourth one that we've done, and we've had good success. So I think Stephanie will concur with that. And the best thing about it is, I, I think I've talked to Commissioner Val and Commissioner Isabel a lot about this. It's an economic stimulus to that area, and it's hard to get an economic stimulus to Bryce, who it means a lot. And this is vital. This actually connects Wind Rock Mountain and Oliver Springs all the way up to Slate Stone Road, which we know is just outside the city of Rocky Top. And if you remember, what we did years ago, the very first one that we did was in Rocky Top. So it's all coming together. The third one we did was another stretch there. And thank you, Stephanie, for all you do in this area, but for all your work. But this is all coming together, and now they can access all those trails back in there. Gosh, I heard one time, I know it's over 1,000 miles of trails, but they can access it from a couple of different points now, not just all that congestion around Oliver Springs at the Wind Rock Mountain. They can actually come and access all those trails at Wind Rock Mountain from Slate Stone Road, Lake City. So it's wonderful that, for those folks.
If I could just add that, the intention behind this is to allow the ATV riders to access, access our commerce areas. Sorry, I have a cold. So, so it's not just to, you know, open our roads up for them to ride on. It's so that they can access commerce areas. And so we have had lodging facilities and convenience stores come to us and say, you know, we'd like for them to be able to come to us. So there was other options, and we did analyze the area and decided that this was the safest option.
Excellent. Thank you, Stephanie. Commissioner Mead, did you have a question?
No, I'm going to have a statement.
Yes, sir.
Uh, one, as the law director kind of already pointed out, during the time that these people are allowed on these roads, they're subject to state laws for driving, and they can be taken and such. The other, I wanted to point out that there was a motion made for this very same resolution in the legislative committee, and it was passed recommending approval from the legislative committee.
Thank you. Any other questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
The next resolution was resolution opposition to Henderson Bridge at Bull Run Creek.
Jay, and we all got a resolution. I think I want to, Mr. Chairman, if I could just defer that for 30 days, because I'm not sure everyone was able to get the resolution. And Jay, I appreciate, I mean, you've got eight resolutions you're working on, so, and I'm.
I'm admitting that to your amendments.
Okay.
So it's been done, I've noticed, went through the TDOT construction logistics, and there was a pin number associated with New Henderson. And I got confused, but this is not a TDOT issue. I'm talking with Chairman Wondell. This is a TVA issue. So the first one I sent out to you late last night has been amended, and I think you should have it, but the one Kim has, we're asking TVA. We're opposing what TVA has planned there. And I think that the impetus was that, was Bull Run's going to be gone here in a few years, and we're going to be stuck with a, a bridge or tunnel that we can't use.
Right. I think TVA's intent, and Commissioner Fritz was at a meeting with myself, Gary Long, and Mr. Alderson, and TVA wanted to build a, a bridge over the curve in New Henderson and Claxton to be able to go to the 120-plus acres to start initiating the landfill for the storage of more coal ash. And, and I, based on the fact that they're going to shut the facility down, we believe, I think. We won't take action tonight. Let's just push it to the next meeting so we can all review that. Because Commissioner Fritz? Yes, sir.
I agree.
Oh, okay, okay.
If you get any more additional information on that, let me tailor that resolution a little bit better.
Yeah, let's do that. And that will give everybody a chance to review it, make sure we're not saying anything we shouldn't. And I appreciate you, Mr. Chairman, putting on there.
I'm asking very quietly.
Okay. Thank you.
Only one other thing, Mr. Chairman, and it's not an action item, but Commissioner Denenberg is going to report on groundwater contamination, and I, and she's going to be doing that to her other committee that she's chairman of. Because in the news last week, especially after all this rain, and the situation that we're going to have with TVA moving out, and with this bridge, you know, I think what she's doing is she's actually taking the phone herself to help look out for all the citizens of Anderson County going forward. You know, with our situation we've got in Oak Ridge as well.
Yep.
And, but I commend her on that.
Yes, good comments. I agree.
That concludes my report, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner McCamey, yes, sir?
I gave an update to the operations committee about Glen Alpine, that the bids had come in. There was a budget item that was approved earlier in the commission. So now I can announce something I've been waiting 28 years on, is that the bids will be awarded tomorrow to begin the work on the new Glen Alpine convenience center.
That's, that's it. Do we, and, and once it's awarded, I get, do we have a, you got an estimate on timeframe, when it starts?
It's in the bid, I don't know if I can protect him, but I'm, I don't want to put a date on it right now, but we'll.
The wheels are actually spinning now.
That's right. The bid can be awarded tomorrow.
Okay.
And it will be tomorrow.
Thank you, Commissioner McCamey. I appreciate that. Any other, let's go to old business. And thank you, Chairman, for your report.
We have a official item. Please let me report.
Oh, I apologize. I apologize. Go ahead, sir. Legislature.
Yeah, the legislative committee met on 6 March. Initially, they opened up the floor to the collection of the chair. I was re-elected as the chair of the legislative committee. Upon a motion made by Commissioner Creasy and seconded by Commissioner Anderson, passed to have the next legislative committee in August, because we have a bunch of things still to talk about, specifically the private act potentially involving the hotel motel occupancy tax. We had a little bit of time to handle that, so we wanted to look at it a little bit deeper. That's just for information. A motion was made by Commissioner Meredith and seconded by Commissioner Creasy to pass the law director prayer resolution opposing school vouchers. I have that, that here. It's been distributed to everybody on the commission. It's relatively lengthy. It uses the same language that was used by the school board. It basically opposes vouchers of any kind. And I, I would recommend, I make a mo, I would require, I make a motion that we, to approve this. Oh, I personally think that there should be some places where there's moved, moved to move, but that's not what passed committee.
All right. Somebody say second?
A second.
Okay, so you had a motion to pass it?
I make a motion to pass the resolution.
Seconded by Fritz. Any further discussions on that resolution, opposing school vouchers? Is that what we're talking about?
Yes. I assume that will be forwarded on to our legislators and, yeah, the state legislators.
Good question, Commissioner Smallridge.
To, and to the school board and to the mayor.
Thank you. Commissioner Scott?
At a recent conference where we had, we were in Nashville for county government days, both the TCCA and the TCSA have backed that same stance.
Yes.
Because it's what the county commissioners throughout the state of Tennessee are requesting them to stand up for. So we're all looking to oppose it, not just what you see here in Anderson County.
Good comments.
Thank you.
Any other questions on that? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Did I miss somebody?
Well, no, I was going to ask.
Oh, I thought you was pointing.
Commissioner Meredith, he had some good comments at our legislative committee, and some good points about the Chamber of Commerce across the state, and their support for this.
That's correct, Chair Creasy.
See, the Tennessee Chamber of Commerce and all of them have taken the same stance on this same resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you, Meredith.
Good comment. I appreciate you saying that. I thought you were going to say he was against what we're voting on.
Oh, no, no.
Then that would have caused us problems.
Yeah.
Okay. We already voted on it. Good job. Anything else, Mr. Chairman, on that legislative?
Okay, and we also made a motion to pass to support the ATV resolution. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well done. New business. Stephanie, well, I got you in here, and I don't mean to put you on the spot. I'll come back to you, McCamey. Is, and you may not know this, is, is, is it possible to get grants from the tourism side to, to like, if we wanted to consider an idea of putting in a museum?
There is a grant available called the Tourism Enhancement Grant, and if you'll remember, it's what we used, or what we're going to use to fund the ramp at Anderson County Park. And it stipulates, unless they change it, and it's fixing to come out, they stipulate that it has to be county property or city property. So there are grants available, and, and that's ran through the community and economic development and the tourism department.
Is there a range, do you know?
It's $75,000, I think, is the most that it has been. It's been between $50,000 and $75,000. But I know there's an ARC grant that the Coal Miners Museum received a few years ago, but that was a very unique situation. We were even told that they did do that. And while, if you don't mind, if you let me say, because I know in my report, I reported that we would be starting the ramp at Anderson County Park, as long as the water recedes back down to the 990 mark, I think, they will be able to proceed with that. And I'll let you all know, that's a really unique construction process, so I'll let you know when that's going on. But we're just praying no more rain. And if not, we'll have to delay it till next year. And there, we'll have to ask for another extension, and I'm not guaranteed that we'll be awarded that extension. So let's pray that it stops raining.
Thank you, Stephanie. Appreciate what you do. Commissioner McCamey?
On our agenda, in between new business and adjourn, we used to have a spot there for announcements, for any commissioner who had something they would like to announce. And I know this last couple of months, that's not showed up.
I think, you, obviously you're right, but I think we just kind of do another new business. But do you have an announcement, or would you like to put it back in there?
I've got a question I'd like to ask the law director, though, that, and then I may have an announcement.
Okay, okay.
Who appoints the delinquent tax committee?
That's, that's one of our committees by statute. And I believe, I'll have to look at that, but I believe the county commission. I know we confirmed that committee, but that's a statutory committee. And now, remember, the name of that is resale of properties purchased at the delinquent tax sale. They really don't have any authority over the delinquent tax attorney or anything like that. That is, that, they deal exclusively with the resale of properties where the county is the default purchaser at the tax sale.
Okay, I knew it was called the delinquent tax committee, and I thought that we appointed that, and my recommendation was going to be that, you know, to suggest that the mayor and the trustee meet with that committee prior to choosing another.
That is set by statute. And that's not one of their powers. It's a great idea, Robert, don't get me wrong, but that's set specifically for the stated purpose in the statute. And they take the bids, authorize the, the purchase amount for properties that the county has purchased at the delinquent tax sale auction as the default purchaser.
Okay. So it wouldn't have anything to do, I mean, they wouldn't have any authority or, I mean, I'd just hate to get into another battle like we did here tonight.
Well, I don't want to see that either.
You know, and I think it was kind of embarrassing for some people, but.
It's a situation that unfortunately is out of our control.
Right. Okay, thank you, sir.
Any announcement?
No. I was, I was going to make an announcement, but.
Commissioner, Commissioner Creasy?
Yeah, announcement?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, Stephanie and I have been working together for several months to get Brent Galloway and Tim Isabel and all to give a presentation. And I want to thank Tim Isabel and Stephanie for the hard work in working with Brent and Coal Creek Mining, that bringing tourism to this county, bringing in a lot of revenue for the tourism council. And we're working to try to have a program in our presentations part of our, on the consent agenda for April, and if we can get that worked out. And so that's my announcement, and I'm sure Tim and, and Stephanie and Brent will do a good program.
Thank you, Commissioner. Appreciate what y'all are doing. Commissioner Isabel?
Commissioner Creasy, those kind words. On the radio today, during you and, and the mayor's time on the radio, there was a guy called in, said he's really proud to see Anderson County Government pulling the rope in the same direction. So that attributes to your leadership, this legislative bodies' commitment, the mayor and the law director, every one of these people, everyone was mentioned. So that's what the public sees now. So I want to commend each and every one of you. That's it. I think we've been going in the right direction. You're absolutely correct.
Together, we can do it all. Anything else? Appreciate the kind words. Motion to adjourn, second. All in favor, aye. Thank you all. Same batch?